I'd like to call the meeting of the Hyde Park School Board to order at 5:35. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? Alright, I would now like a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular persons or persons, and potential litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Good evening, everybody. May I have a motion to get, leave executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. We're now in, return to open session. At this time, we'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any agenda modifications. May I have a motion to accept the agenda as dated on the-
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so we're now at Pride. You want to introduce yourself so everybody knows who you are?
Yeah, I'm Aviva Kafka, Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Services and just this week Acting Superintendent. So, thank you for your patience tonight. There's a lot of pride to share with you. Dr. Rycheck received a thank you letter from the Poughkeepsie Public Library for leadership and support of the literacy program, Big Read. Kudos goes out to FDR librarian Tracy Ansley and FDR teacher Marion Williams. Ms. Ansley represented the district at planning meetings and creatively advocated literacy. We thank her for accommodating a visit from Big Read speaker Sandra Roberts in October. Ms. Williams generously opened up several of her classes to Ms. Roberts for a captivating presentation on her school's paper clips projects, and thank you for all students who attentively Netherwood-North Park and Ralph R. Smith Elementary Schools were recognized by the Northern Duchess News in their School of the Week segment. Netherwood students were treated to a presentation on the Jungle Book by the Puppet People earlier this month. For the ninth year, students at North Park Elementary participated in the Jump Rope for Heart event sponsored by the American Heart Association. Students raised approximately $1,500 this year, and over $29,600 during the nine years of participation. That's almost $30,000. Ralph R. Smith students were highlighted for their participation in the school's annual science fair. That's actually not it. And you may want to speak a little bit about National Engineers Week. I have some information. IBM coordinator is Lynn Schiffer. She's been doing this for several years. E-week for elementary is March 3rd through 6th for 4th and 5th graders, and E-week for Haviland is March 10th through 12th for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. IBM volunteers take our kids through a fun problem-solving activity, and they get to learn about and act like engineers. They collaborate, design, create, and test their products. I know you've participated in the past, I'll say that.
Correct.
Yeah. We also have a lot from Fine Arts. January 24th through 25th, the Hyde Park Central School District and FDR Music Department hosted the Duchess County Music Educators Association Junior High School All-County Festival. Congratulations go to our own 22 Hyde Park musicians for this honor. In addition, we welcomed over 300 music students from all public and private Duchess County schools, 100 teachers over the two-day festival. A total audience of 1,400 filled our newly renovated FDR Theater during the two concerts on Saturday afternoon. Many thanks goes to our Facilities and Operations Department, who cleared snow from the parking lot, moved hundreds of chairs and percussion equipment, the FDR Building Administration for their support in managing room usage, and our Hyde Park Music Boosters, who provided meals and refreshments both days for the students and teachers. We also thank FDR Music faculty Amy Martin and Jim Osborne for serving as festival chairs. The concerts were a huge success. On February 28th, which is tomorrow, and Saturday, March 1st, we'll do it all over again, this time at Haviland Middle School for the Elementary All-County Festival. My daughter will be there. Thank you to Hyde Park faculty Marcia Gates, Sam Newsom, and Ryan Wade, who are the festival chairs and building principal, Mr. Eric Shaw, for his support in getting the building ready for this event. We also had two tremendous concerts. On February 11th, the Haviland Band Festival presented a wonderful evening of combined band music under the direction of Mrs. Gates and Mr. Newsom, and on the following evening, February 12th, the FDR Music Department presented the Prisms Concert. The audience was treated to many wonderful large and small group and solo performances. Thanks go to Mrs. Martin, Mrs. Reim, Mr. Osborne, and Mr. Wade. And also, there were six FDR art students who received regional awards at the Scholastic Art Competition and are moving on to the Nationals. We have a winter sports summary. The girls' basketball team, do you want to have me say it and you just join in?
I'll, go ahead, be my, you got it written down.
I do. The girls' basketball team finished their regular season with 8-8 record, 5-3 in the league. Is that said right?
Right.
Okay.
With that, they earned the opportunity to compete at the sectional level. Their first-round game was held two days ago. Unfortunately, they lost to Newburgh, at Newburgh, and their sectional tour is now over. The boys also finished with the 50-50 record. They also participated in sectionals. They traveled to Goschen, and in a very competitive game, I was down, a very competitive game that was decided in the last two minutes. They also lost and are finished with their sectional competition. I sincerely think that both teams lost to a potential number-one sectional winner. But they both were very competitive and had a very excellent season and did very well.
Okay, and I'll just add that Ishmael Chisholm and Ruben Jimenez were selected as first-team All-Stars.
Correct.
And the boys' swim team, Marlboro Highland FDR, had three FDR boys, Michael Craven, Nick Craig, and Robert Hoffman, qualify for the sections based on, or sectionals, based on their impressive times. FDR hosted the gymnastics sectionals on February 12th. Team had an impressive performance highlighted by Amanda Mitten-Meyer's performance, which qualified her for the state meet in Brockport on the weekend of March 1st, which is this weekend. The bowling team finished second in Section 9, had nine bowlers qualify for the state meet in Long Island, also tomorrow, or, sorry, Saturday. They included Christian Schroeder, Zach Carey, Cody Penny, Sean Heppert, Peter Skivalett, Brianna O'Brien, Lauren Height, Sarah Schlager, and Megan Cosier. The cheerleading squad finished third in the state tournament held in Syracuse on February 8th. They also finished first in Division II category, second overall at the John Jay Invitational Competition. We just heard, or a couple days ago, we just heard that the varsity cheerleaders came in first at Nationals at Reach the Beach Competition, Ocean City, Maryland, this past weekend, and our junior varsity team came in third. It's a great accomplishment and reflection on the squad's ability and teaching and dedication of the coaching staff. And last for Pride, Bridget Lava, a 2013 FDR graduate, recently reviewed the Skyline Conference Rookie, or received the Skyline Conference Rookie of the Year for her accomplishments in cross-country. She attends Mount St. Mary College. The indoor track team finished third in their respective division at the divisional meet held at West Point. Thank you. That's Pride, what I have.
Okay. We had a cancellation for our last meeting, and so Pride is a little bit more than normal, but we're very proud of the people in our district and students. And I would say, anybody that gets a chance to go to any of the all-county or all-state music festivals, you won't be disappointed. They're absolutely wonderful. Okay, so if we could move on. At this time, normally it's superintendent's report. So, oh, one other thing in Pride, let me just mention, last night there was a very nice Black History Assembly put on by students that, to me, was very interesting, and it made you think about things. So I think that's a really good educational situation, and I think that we need to recognize that education isn't just classroom education, it's also this type of an activity. So, it was well done. Alright, then we'll go on to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. So, I wanted to report about snow days. So, at this time, the district's snow days have been used. If we need to close school again, the first makeup day will be Monday, April 14th. The second day would be Tuesday, April 15th. The third will be the 16th, and the fourth would be the 17th, and that's it. Haviland heat update, over the long weekend recently, all of the mechanical components that were scheduled for replacement were completed. We're still examining other parts of the system, but the heat is much, much improved in the A-Wing. And we do have Elliot Garcia here, if there's any questions from the board. If there's not, thank you. Thank you for being here. English honors update. The past five years of enrollment in both the English honors and AP American History English honors were reviewed, along with the projections for current sophomores interested in these courses for next year. The decision has been made to continue to offer one section of each course next year. That's the same as this year. So, I wanted to give that update, since this was a public discussion last time. And the last piece is one I would have been giving anyway, an update on elementary dismissal procedures. So, there were questions raised last time about consistency and safety and dismissal procedures at the elementary level. So I did a comparison of the procedures in each building, and I'm going to share that information with you. And I'll say also that Lisa Heck is here, and if there's questions from the board specifically about North Park dismissal procedures, she'd be happy to come up and answer your questions. So, I'll just let you know sort of what's happening everywhere first. So, I looked at where and how people are dismissed and parents come into the building, when and how communication has been going on about the procedures as they've changed. So, I'm just going to go through each building, by building. So, at Netherwood, there's a front door buzzer. Parents wait in the cafeteria. Students are called into the other door in the cafeteria, and there's staff there who dismisses to parents there, their supervision in the cafeteria, and the sign-outs in the cafeteria, and parents can leave before the buses. The expectation is that parents come in 10 minutes before dismissal. And it was communicated when the principal spoke to the people who regularly come and pick up. Early February, there were 15 or 20 parents there, and at that time, there were no questions or concerns raised at Netherwood. At North Park, the parents wait in line in a hallway, not, you know, right by the front of the building. Students are in the gymnasium, being supervised. There's supervision in the cafeteria and in the hallway. Students are called by name. There's walkie-talkies back and forth, and again, parents can leave before the buses. That side door is opened at 3:10, and parents all leave by 3:25. The principal spoke also early February with the parents who regularly pick up, explained the recent changes about, and some of the recent changes were calling students by name and calling them earlier, and at that time, there were no questions or concerns raised by that group. Ralph R. Smith has a front door buzzer. Parents wait in the lobby. They're signed out from the main office by a secretary, and the parents can leave before the buses. Parents sign students out as they arrive. This was discussed at a PTA meeting newsletter, and there's a sign in the lobby. Also, no questions or concerns were raised at Smith. Violet Avenue, parents wait in the cafeteria, supervision and sign-out is in the cafeteria. Parents leave before the buses. Cafeteria rear doors open 10 minutes before dismissal, and the principal spoke with that group in October. There were no questions or concerns raised. So at this time, if you have any questions, either about what I've put together here or a question specifically about North Park dismissal, feel free.
Alright, does anybody have a question?
I just, you know, basically, as I remember the conversations we had and stuff like that, there was some concern about the process leaving the building open to people coming in and then wandering through the building. It sounds like in all cases, we're looking at, there's a containment area for parents coming in to pick up their kids. There's a sign-out for the kids, it's not just, you know, here's all the kids grabbing a parent and grabbing somebody and running out the door. And there is really not very easy access to the rest of the building for the people that are coming in for dismissal. As far as the basic concerns we have of safety and security, I think, you know, these procedures seem to fit the needs that we have projected without turning the buildings into pseudo-prisons, which obviously, we don't want to create that kind of environment. So I, you know, I'm satisfied with what I'm hearing is the process, you know.
Well, I think the parent who was concerned, spoke at the last meeting, when we had a meeting, was concerned about not buzzing in at North Park, that they lined up, when the door opened, they walked in, and there was sometimes and not always asked for identification. Just repeating what they said, not saying that's what happened. So I was hoping I would hear something that explained why somebody would come and tell us that, you know.
And I can let Ms. Heck answer, but I do know, we had a lot of discussion about ID and verifying ID, and we sort of went with the overall word "verify" for all, because if you see Mrs. Jones every single day, to ask her to pull out her driver's license every single day, you know, felt, you know, inappropriate. But you verify that that's Mrs. Jones, and so that makes it fair. So I can say that piece about ID. But I do know that when I went to North Park for dismissal, and I saw there was a staff member opening the door to people, making sure that other people were not coming in, and we sort of discussed the difference, like, there's a buzzer at the front door, but a secretary is basically looking at your face on a screen and deciding to let you into the building, and then trusting that you're going to come into the main office, sign in, and check ID there. It's really not that different to have a staff member opening the door to you. So, you know, we had that discussion.
In my opinion, it's not an inconven, even if it isn't inconvenient to show ID, it should be done all the time, just to be consistent. But, that's my opinion, so.
So, do the parents picking up the students come in through the front door that has this buzzing system, or is it a second, a separate entrance?
Two of the buildings use the front door.
Well, let's talk about just North Park primarily, because that's where, I think we're, there was some criticism of how the process was. So, are they, do the parents come in through this-
Side door.
Through a side door.
By the parking lot. So they park, and then they can, the side door is opened by a staff person.
Okay, so there's a staff member standing at the door, opens the door up, lets the people come in, because I think that was one of the other points that I heard, was that they had to wait outside for some period of time.
The doors open at a distinct time.
Okay.
So that, you know, parents know when the doors are going to be open.
If you get there early, you are going to wait a little while until-
Or you could wait in your car.
Yep, okay, okay.
You said that the kids are called, then called to come to the-
Kids, there's like a staging area, so they're all really ready, and then they're called by name, and they come over.
So there is somebody at the door verifying that such-and-such a parent has arrived and calling for that student?
At North Park, it's actually three people. There's a person opening the door, there's a person checking that the parent is the right parent, being hooked up with the right student, and then there's a person in the gym supervising the kids there as their parents arrive.
Sounds like a system.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yeah, are these individual buildings, are they reviewed with a district-wide committee? Save Committee?
Yes.
At a time?
Yeah, well, there's membership from every building, safety team on the district save, but we spent a lot of time last year reviewing dismissal procedures at Save.
And these are typical of last year, not much change from the last couple of years?
There have been, there have been some changes. You know, and it was really post-Sandy Hook, everybody reviewed all their procedures. So, you know, they got more, you know, more supervised, more stringent. The one-to-one, you know, calling of students was really a way to save time and be more convenient, so that you're not waiting for your child to gather their books.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, we move on.
Thank you, and that's all I have for the report.
Okay. Now we're at 6.4, the Master Facilities Plan Update, Wayne. Let me just make a statement before we start here. Normally, we try and keep presentations to 10 minutes, and I don't know how you're going to put 26 or 8, whatever it is, boils up in 10 minutes. So, you know, I know, I realize you're going to go over, but I would like you to be as efficient as possible and not be overly wordy, alright?
I'd like to call up some folks that are going to help me present this evening. First of all, I'd like to call up Elliot Garcia, Director of Facilities and Operations. I would have liked to have invited up Barbara Marine, but she's unable to be here tonight. She sends her apologies, she's not feeling well. Barbara Sweet, who's a Facility Steering Forum member, and Ms. Christine Jones, who's also a Facility Steering member. So, I'd like to introduce all these folks, because they'll be working together with me tonight to get through this quickly and promptly. But I'd like to tell you how and who they represent. Elliot certainly represents our Facilities and Operations, and our project team, along with myself, representing the district. Barbara Marine represented the administrators, who worked hard for many, many, many months reviewing the buildings and coming up and putting together what is a compilation of all the things that need to be completed in our district, and that's done every five years. Barbara Sweet, she represents our community and other community organizations, and Christine Jones represents our community and local businesses, and as I said, they're both standing, longstanding members of our Facilities and Operations Department, excuse me, our, not project team, but the Facility Steering Forum, excuse me. So I'm moving along to our 13-14 goal, complete and update the Master Facilities Plan. So over the past two years, we've spent a lot of time, effort, energy, in bringing these documents to you this evening, and part of this was to communicate and identify a process to illustrate the capital project needs throughout the district. And what we mean by this is a living document. So as things occur, a perfect example could be the A-Wing heat at Haviland has made its way up to a high priority in our Master Facilities Plan. And we meet with the project team, building staff and administrators, to update the Master Facilities Plan regularly with any new projects that have been identified, and then we finalize a completely updated Master Facilities Plan with the Master Facility Steering Forum and the group of community members and staff, focus on all the capital project needs throughout the district. And then we present an updated Master Facilities Plan to the Board of Education, which is this evening. Some great things have come out of this group, and really having the Facility Steering Forum on board with us, our administrators, our Facilities Department, you know, a perfect example would be the natural gas lines at Violet Avenue and Hyde Park Elementary. Those were at one point slated for new boilers, and instead, you know, thanks to our community members, you know, somebody raised their hand and said, well, you know, isn't there natural gas, you know, available there? So there is some really great things that do happen as a result of this group and this project, and we're very proud to present tonight. So with that being said, I'll hand over the mic to Christine Jones.
Yeah, behind you. Hi. Our, just hit the slide if we could, next slide. There, to divide our expenses or our projects just into two sections. One is the Master Facility Plan, which is used for long-term projects that could be, you'll see later, you'll see A, B, and C, so one to three years, three to five years, five-plus years. And those are rather high-cost projects that will be done over time, and according to its priorities, how it is alphabetized. It is state-funded. So when we have a major project we want to undertake, it's a great thing that the state aid comes in approximately 60 percent. So that's the good news, that we only have to pay maybe 40 percent of the large project. The bad news, or the not-so-good news, I should say, is that we have to go out for the bonding, and we will ultimately have to pay for that. But when you want something, you've got to pay for it. The drip program, however, is the District Renovation Improvement Plan, and that's for smaller projects, and oftentimes, well, what it does is it comes right out of our annual budget. So, the good news is you don't have to bond and pay for it over a long time, but the bad news is we're going to pay for it during our, over our yearly budget. Okay, next slide. The identification of the project is basically Elliot, Wayne, the superintendents, the principals, and facility planning people, and the architect get together, and they survey, each year they go through, and they find out what are the buildings needing. And along with the architect, he has an architect's building survey, but I think he has to file that every year. So this is how the beginning of what we need to do and where it's going to fall comes from. Is it going to be a long-term project, or is it going to be taken care of a year? I'd just like to say that I'm proud to serve. I've been on it since its birth. I've been through three superintendents already, and it was nice to see the windows done at Haviland and all the historic buildings, and the parking lots taken care of, and the safety of traffic flow of the buses at Haviland, and asbestos removed, and so on and so forth. And we've had special interest folks come, stop in, whether we needed a new refrigerator for the kitchen, or wonderful new track and sports field, they'll come through for projects that the community or people in the school district identify. And then just the timeline, we can just start here at 2012, and it's just going to show how they went through, they came up with the project, saw what needed to be done, went through administration, it went through the special team they have that I'm not on, project team. And we review and review and review, and we move things around, you're going to hear more about that later. Until today, February 2014, and we're here. Thank you.
Just to give you a brief idea of the process that we use, we start with our administrators in our buildings, the people closest to our facilities, and they give us their list of needs and observations in their various locations. This list is then prioritized with a classification by number and a priority by letter. The classification just basically gives you a category, health and safety, efficiency, programmatic needs, and aesthetics. The priorities A, B, and C reflect an immediate need, an intermediate need, and something that can wait for the five-to-seven-year schedule. So, as the administrators and the folks closest to the buildings compile their list, it's given to project team, that's myself, Wayne, the architects, the engineers, and the facilities professionals that oversee these processes, to then further categorize, add to, combining data from the building condition surveys. Then we bring it to the Facility Steering Forum for community input. And as we go through the list, you'll see a lot of things may have been bumped up in priority or augmented based on the community's feedback. One last time, that list is then brought back to the administrators to share the feedback from the community, the changes and adjustments that have been made, before it comes finally to the Board of Education, as it is this evening. Right now, what we did for the purposes of presentation is we summarized all of the items in the A priority. Again, these are things that have been identified and agreed upon to be needed in the next one to three years. So rather than present to you all of the excessive, or extensive lists of things that need to be done in the long term, we wanted to give the board and the community right now, tonight, a quick snapshot of those most important items that are of the utmost concern at the moment. As we go through, you'll notice there's no list for transportation in Hyde Park Elementary School Buildings, as they didn't have any items of an A priority just yet. But we're going to go through this quickly in a building-by-building synopsis. So you'll see Roosevelt High School, we have exterior doors, gym doors, the leftover portions of the cafeteria, exterior basketball plaza, locker rooms, and classroom science labs. Now, just to note, the lockers and locker room items all came out of Facility Steering Forum feedback, and you'll see them tagged as such on the list. Classroom science labs didn't have an A priority when this list was first put together, but the administrative team and the community all felt that it was a- the administrative team and the community all felt that it was a more important need than originally hypothesized. And so, it was compiled as such and bumped up in priority. Havland Middle School, the heating system, obviously, one A, it's a safety item for health and safety of our students, it's also an immediate need, it's something we've already started working on, and so the capital portion of what's on this list is anything that's large-scale and remaining after the in-house repairs that we've already completed. Locker rooms appear once again here, and these science labs were also increased in priority by the community and the administrative teams. Netherwood Elementary, we have the gym floor, chairlifts, and these, these chairlifts are at the end of their life, so we're looking to upgrade and replace. The septic system and the well tank are both currently functional but approaching the end of their lives as well. North Park Elementary, we had a safety issue with the bus loop that we're considering a multi-room HVAC upgrade, and this is just another item that shows how, how much of a living document this is. That item was born out of the moisture concerns from earlier in the year. And so, the item is noted as not just a cooling, but a dehumidification system to directly address the moisture concerns that we experienced over the summer and the beginning of the school year, as well as a bathroom renovation noted on the list. Ralph R. Smith, we have a bus parking, and this is a comprehensive bus loop, faculty parking and guest parking item. We kind of take things that are loosely related and bundle them together as if we would address them as a project rather than in pieces. Bathroom, security upgrades, again, a wheelchair lift replacement, same device as in Netherwood Elementary, and replacement window sills. Violet Avenue is looking for a parking lot extension, again, not just a capacity issue, but a safety issue. When cars don't have a place to park safely, they double park, triple park, and it creates a bit of a bottleneck and a safety concern during intake and dismissal, and improving handicap access at the main entrance. The district office, we have an item for exterior doors and security card swipes, which we are beginning the legwork of investigating at this time. And district-wide projects, we have a security system upgrade comprehensive to the whole district, and electrical backup generators, this is another item that actually Ms. Sweet brought to the table during the Facility Steering Forum feedback sessions for us to explore alternative power sources for our school buildings. And with that, I will bring up Barbara Sweet to continue the presentation.
Okay, so you can see how the state has actually asked all the schools to focus on science. So, what we've done, Elliot, Wayne, and I went down to Casper Hill Country Club, and that's being remodeled into schoolrooms. And we also went up to Red Hook and took a look at what they have in their science labs. So, we've gotten some ideas, and at our next meeting, we're gonna go over some of those ideas, along with some of the teachers that went up with Red Hook. The bus loops and the student park off, drop-off, we've gotta be very, gotta keep that in mind because of safety. We do not want any of the kids to get hurt. And the same with the handicap people. The lockers, lockers in the high school and Havland, I think were put in, I think I heard nineteen sixty-five, okay? As, as you know, there are less number of books, so we're not gonna need as big locker each kid. And how do we get in? Well, if you go down to Stop &amp; Shop, you know, you can swipe your card in and pick up a little thing that will, you just swipe your cards. And that's what we're thinking about for the lockers, just something on your wrist that you swipe, and it opens your locker rather than a key. Okay, the next, it's been district-wide that we wanna keep the level. We wanna not do big project and then small projects, and then another big project. So, we try and keep it even, okay? So, the old, as the older debt, when that gets done, the work, and that debt gets paid, then we'll start in on something else. But like, as we, as Chris said, we gotta do safety and security and science. Right now, the current status, we've gone over this over and over again, and as Chris said, the, this is gonna be A-type work that we're talking about, and that's gonna be one to three years.
Great, thank you, Barbara. The Facility Steering Forum has done a fantastic job providing feedback illustrative of our community's concept and the needs of our district, specifically for projects that should be considered in the next one to three years, as you've seen tonight. And I believe those are the things that we wanna keep our concentration and, and, you know, our, our eyes peeled on as we start to develop new projects in the future. So, what are our next steps? Certainly, keep this document a living document, make changes to it as, as, as they occur, keep a keen awareness of the community's ability to support the future referendums. As Barbara mentioned, we try to level our debt service so that there's no spike or increase in the, in that, in that expense placed in our budget, build economies of scale, continuously update this, this document, regroup, reprioritize, reassess, and make future recommendations. So, you know, as a result of this, of this, we have a, a good living document, something we can build from. And we thank you for your time tonight to listen to this presentation, and I really thank those folks to, you know, for taking their time to practice this presentation. And we welcome folks to come into our Facility Steering Forum. We meet the first Wednesday of every month, and we always welcome new faces and ideas. So, thank you.
Does anybody have any question? I, I, thank you for being prompt, that was a good job. You get, you get an A for this one. I, I do have one question. I can understand the bus loop at Ralph Smith, but I don't understand staff parking, this parking there already, so why, I mean...
That item was, came out of three different items that did both Ralph R. Smith and Transportation's common parking areas. So, what we're investigating is the capacity for that common lot that, that sits between the two buildings. And if there was to be a paving project, again, not that any of this is, is in progress of any sort, but if we were to explore a paving project at Ralph R. Smith, we would also consider the parking capacity that's shared by both the building and the Transportation Depot.
Okay, you're considering it.
Well, it's, it's just, it would have to be looked at comprehensively because it's shared space. That's why it was noted as such and put under the Ralph R. category rather than Transportation's.
I just wanna make sure it's not on there so that people don't have to walk so far.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Doug, I...
I've got one question, probably for Elliot. As far as, a lot of these project lines, it's got price pending, estimated cost, so how far away from filling those numbers in?
A lot of, so, the, of the numbers that are listed, a lot of them came out of previous, you know, more in-depth surveys, like the building condition surveys, where they, they always give you a ballpark figure. As the architects do their assessment, they are contracted to do those assessments for us as regulated by the state. A lot of the new items that we put in, for example, HVAC at North Park or HVAC at Havland...
Or the science labs.
These, the science labs, these are, these are new projects that either just came into play, or as the science labs were, reconfigured items, where we took smaller items and bundled them together. And so, it's not fair to give you a piecemeal cost, it, it wouldn't be valid. And, and one of the things that we did focus on with the, the feedback sessions was, we really wanted the community to give us their, their concept of need and, and not worry so much about dollars just yet, because we wanted to present the Board with the purest form of the need-based concept of the community.
I understand that, but, I mean, these are large projects we're talking about.
Agreed, and, and...
The community needs to know somewhat of a number of what it costs to do these things.
From, from my perspective in facilities, and, and again, working very closely with Wayne, if the Board deems it necessary to go in and investigate these prices, then we would spend the money to do the legwork, to get real-world price figures. But, but because there is both a time limit on pricing as well as a, a cost to, to provide it, we were apprehensive to go out and get it before the Board had a chance to review the documents.
Yeah, and I would just wanna reinforce that. I, I've had the pleasure of working in this committee, actually. I was on this committee before I was a Board Member, and this is, this is a document that just really helps us keep a focus on what needs to be done. I mean, it's, it's not intended to have the depth of detail to say, this is what we're, you know, this is exactly what we're gonna do. This is, this is that thirty-thousand-foot view of where the district is and where we need to be thinking about what we're doing. And, you know, you know, science, you know, we're doing bathrooms, we're doing science rooms, you know, it's, it's, it's very big picture. And when you start looking at saying, "Okay, we're gonna do something," then you can start defining it much better. But at this point, it's, it's a rough document, and it, and it's gonna live, it's gonna move, you know, and you pointed out that there's nothing in the Transportation Department. I think that if you had to rewrite this today, I think there's something in the Transportation Department that needs some attention. So, you know, it's, it's a very living document, it's gonna change over time. Good, good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, can we move on to the FDR Security Structure Update? With our able-fill-in APs.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Ruela, Mike Ruela, Dean of Students at Roosevelt High School. Mrs. Marine is unable, unable to attend tonight, she's been battling the flu for some time. So, myself, Mr. Cowan, an Assistant Principal, and Mr. Plesha, another Assistant Principal, is gonna fill in in her stead. So, we're gonna be talking about Roosevelt High School's Security Structure Update. And our original security proposal included student resource officers, four part-time senior school security officers, and daily monitoring of school cameras. Although the student resource officer was a prior position, we felt it necessary to emphasize how important Officer Monaco is in our community and in our, our building. Our part-time school, senior school security officers, this allowed us the opportunity to bring in individuals that had several years' experience in the field of criminal justice and/or experience in criminal justice in education. And lastly, daily monitoring of surveillance cameras, we just felt that it was very important that we had an individual continually, continuously observing the building throughout the day so they could notify building administrators or our security officers if need be. Long-standing components of the security system, it includes four building administrators that we really focus on positive and consistent discipline. We really, when we speak with students, we focus on the root of the behavior and ways to prevent negative behavior, instead of just administering a consequence and sending them on their way. We really wanna get to the bottom of, of what their actions are all about. All four administrators have an open-door policy, which really builds great rapport with students, and makes them feel comfortable coming in to speak to us about any incidences. Our student resource officer, Officer Monaco, is very proactive, not only in the building, but in our community. He continuously is working with students, staff, parents, and community members, just to really foster a, a good relationship with the Hyde Park Police Department and the district. A camera system gives us and provides us with concrete evidence of what's happening. A lot of times, we're dealing with, you know, students, they come in and it turns into a he-said, she-said kind of situation, and it just allows us more concrete evidence to go back into the surveillance tapes and observe what actually did happen. So, it provides us with, you know, investigative techniques. Our four resource monitors are continuously being trained, they're being trained in AED response time, CPR training, first aid response. They also undergo TCIS training, which is Therapeutic Crisis Intervention Training, with, which Mr. Cowan will speak to briefly. The new components of the security system, so what we, what we've actually been able to put in place this year at FDR are three senior school security officers, all of which are experienced in law enforcement or in civil service education. Those individuals are Scott Bernhardt, Martin McQuade, which both individuals are here tonight, they were able to come. And Chris Peterson was unable to attend, he's actually in class tonight. Both Scott and Martin have experience with DC probation, and Chris Peterson has seven years' experience with the Marine Corps and four years in the criminal justice program at Marist College right now. Our camera monitoring for exits and entrances, and our Raptor system is supervised by our security monitor, Ms. Ketchum. She is the individual that greets people when they come into the building. And our tech department was able to set up a monitor at her station that allows her to observe all exterior exits and entrances into the building. So, our building administration knows who's coming in and going out at all times. She also works closely with the Raptor system and man's our Raptor system. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the Raptor system, it is a, basically just a small device that allows her to scan an individual's ID when they walk into the building. When she scans the ID, it prints out an ID badge that they wear. It provides a picture and the location that they're going to in the building. It's been really helpful to identify individuals and where they're actually supposed to be in the building. For example, right now, there's a lot of scheduling going on in our Guidance Department, so parents are coming in, they'll have a badge with their picture, and it'll say Guidance Department on it. So, we know that, that's where they're supposed to be located. The Raptor system also provides us with identification of Level Two and Three sex offenders. It scans through various law enforcement agencies. Last but not least, it also provides us with an emergency response button that Ms. Ketchum can activate in case of an emergency that will notify building administrators, along with district administrators and the Hyde Park Police Department. With that in mind, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Mr. Plesha to talk about long-term school climate improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Ruela. Every year, New York State requires schools in the state to pull data regarding discipline issues. It's called VADA, Violence Violent and Disruptive Incident Report. Well, after, you know, we send that report up to the state, we, you know, as a building leadership team, take that data and we look at trends. We look at trends of the disruptive incidences and where they're located. Three things stand out. Certain disruptive incidences, you know, what we classify as reasons students are being suspended at least one day, either in school or out of school, those have reduced by fifty percent. Also, bullying and physical altercations, we're seeing on a steady decline. And I'll give a little more information with that on the next slide. However, one thing I do wanna expand on, our hallways in cafeterias are becoming calmer and more orderly. Now, there's several factors that go along with that. One of the factors that, you know, Mr. Ruela had already mentioned is consistency. You know, I've been working with Ms. Marine for, for six years. Mr. Ruela, Mr. Cowan are former teachers in the district who are now administrators. And students have been experiencing the same discipline, consistency, as well as the same consistent message of expectations for behavior. Our teachers have become more proactive, spending times in the hallways in between classes. We've done some rearranging in terms of where we place our hallway monitors around the cafeterias during lunchtime to stop kids from wandering the building and going off pretty far away from the cafeteria and being disruptive, as well as Officer Monaco, you know, being visible. But one of the things that I think that is happening, and, you know, we're quite proud of it, the students are becoming more comfortable with us. You know, over, over time, you know, students have been coming to us, you know, and, and expressing they're having problems with, with a particular student, or they're hearing that two students are about to have a problem. And with that information, you know, we could refer students to the Guidance Department, to social workers, as well as, you know, Officer Monaco or one of us. So, there's multiple people that the kids can come to. And as a result of all of those things, we're starting, we're starting to see where the hallways in the cafeterias have a much more different atmosphere. Now, what I had spoken with about before, you know, in regards of the VADA report, you'll see two lines up on the board, okay? The darker line, you know, is, is tracking our incidents regarding minor altercations. Now, a minor altercation is, is really a heated argument, you know, it's, it involves shoving, pushing, but no type of injury. Since 2008 and 2009, we've seen a decline, a steady decline in these incidences. 2008 and nine, we had a yearly total of thirty-seven total incidences. Last year, we were down to twenty. At the halfway point of this school year, we are at eight. So, even with, you know, those numbers, we would still come in lower... So, even with, you know, those numbers, we would still come in lower than the prior year. And again, as I had spoken about before, the reasons why I feel, you know, that has occurred, with our SRO, our security monitors, our new SSSOs, as well as Ms. Ketchum observing the cameras in the lobby, that is giving us a heads-up to certain incidences. Also, we track where incidences occur, and we place ourselves strategically in those spots to hopefully, you know, combat those. But, you know, what I also want to stress is that students are more willing to seek out staff members, you know, for assistance. Now, the yellow line is a line that tracks bullying incidences. And on, you know, at the first glance, you see a huge spike around 2011, 2012. Well, this is in part due to the implementation of DASSA, as well as our change of methods of reporting. Also, there's an anonymous bullying report that is on the district website that gives students, staff members, and parents the ability to fill out a report which goes directly to all building administrators, as well as Dan Hurley, the school psychologist. And, you know, Mr. Cowan is going to get into more detail about that, but looking at the actual numbers, you know, there have been more bullying incidences reported, which we feel is a good thing. You know, our numbers will go up a little bit, but again, as I'm saying, more students are becoming comfortable. What you hear a lot of kids saying are, well, I'm not going to tell them that bullying is going on because nothing is going to get done. That is starting to change. Students are starting to fill out the bullying report, and last year was the first year with it, and this year, we're seeing an increase, which is a good thing because students are becoming more comfortable, they're seeing that things are getting done, things are getting done in a counseling way as well as a disciplined way if it is called for. And again, with the team of people with guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, administrators, teachers, you know, we really use every available resource that we have to work on these problems. Now, our other disruptive incidents, you know, this speaks to anything that will cause a student to get placed ISS or OSS, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension for a day. It could be something as general disrespect, insubordination, chronic cutting of class. Since 2008, our numbers have pretty much remained consistent, except for two years, 2010, '11, and '11, '12, where we implemented an electronic policy in the high school, and after working on it for two years, we realized it wasn't getting us the results we wanted to. So, we ended up switching that up a little. In 2012, '13, it went pretty much to the levels of '08, '09, and '09, '10. This year, we're seeing a decrease of 50%. At this time, we have 151 incidences, where usually, we're hovering around the 700 mark. Again, this drop may be caused by all the factors I've mentioned in prior descriptions, as well as work done by the third AP and now the Dean of Students. Since ISS is assigned for people that, you know, chronic cutting of class, the Dean of Students, you know, who's searching attendance really keeps up on those students, involves the parents, you know, at first indication that may be a problem. And we work with the students and the parents and the teachers and everyone else to solve the problem as much, as quickly as possible. And one common element that you're going to hear all of us speak about is a proactive attitude and consistent methods. And as always, we look at methods to reduce the rates of suspension through the TCIS, through PBIS, through further counseling. And furthermore, every summer, we do sit around and we consistently discuss alternatives to suspension. So, at the end of this year, we'll draw our data out, and we will get together as a group, look at our numbers, analyze what had happened, where we want to be, and the best ways on how to get there. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Plesha. I'd like to just briefly discuss the security structure timeline. In October is when we hired our three senior school security officers, and we made arrangements to schedule them to overlap each other, which would allow us to have two SSSOs during each cafeteria period, as well as one in the morning when students arrive and one in the afternoon when students exit the building. Following that, we installed a camera monitor at the main lobby desk, which would allow for constant supervision of all entry points into the building throughout the day. As mentioned earlier, following the camera monitor installation, we decided to create student checkpoints in the hallway, a faculty hallway station system, which is basically, we were provided with the flexibility to remove teachers from the cafeteria because of the SSSOs and place them in the hallway to just strengthen our supervision during our lunch periods. As we continued through the first half of the year, we were able to have enough numbers in building leadership, our resource monitors and our SSSOs, to be able to put one out in the entrance of the building to supervise students as they come off the buses and when parents drop them off. And then, most recently, Mr. Ruela was able to find two qualified substitutes for our SSSOs in case, in the event they, you know, one of them's not able to come in, they could be replaced by someone who is just as qualified as they are. Some of the positive impact that we've experienced because of our SSSOs, again, it's increased presence in the cafeteria, we're able to station teachers out in the hallways, and what's happened as a result of that is the rest of the building has been quieter in the hallways. In the past, students tend to like to slip out of the cafeterias and go into different areas of the building to kind of hang out, and here, it's all kind of been contained in the two hallways that lead to the cafeterias. One of the benefits for us as building administrators is we've been able to spend more time checking in the teachers in the hallway, checking in the cafeteria, and being able to, you know, do our normal daily responsibilities like teacher evaluations and addressing student The SSSOs have worked closely with our school resource officer, Officer Monaco, in providing assistance in surveillance and in sharing information anytime there's an incident. And our SSSOs have demonstrated through our observation during the school year to have a professional demeanor. They're well-respected by our faculty and our students. So, a few of the ways we monitor security here, as you can see, with discipline referrals, as Mr. Plesha mentioned. On a weekly and monthly basis, we discuss our discipline referrals, and really, the common goal is to continue to work towards consistency in how we deal with students. The bullying incident reports, basically what that is, there's a link on our school website for students, parents, or staff to report any incident of bullying. And when they submit that report, it gets sent to the building administrators and Mr. Dan Hurley, our school psychologist, and we're able to respond accordingly, which is usually investigate, counsel students, give discipline where needed, and decide if the incident is reportable to DASSA. One of the other things we look at is attendance data. Mr. Ruela, our Dean of Students, who is in charge of attendance, he reviews excessive absences reports on a bi-weekly basis, and when he targets students that have excessive absences, he works towards arranging a meeting with the parent and the student to first identify why the student is missing school, and then to talk about strategies on trying to get the student to improve their attendance. And number four there are at-risk meetings. We have every Friday morning, the building administrators meet with the guidance staff, the school nurse, school psychologist, and social worker, and during this meeting, we discuss any students that might have some issues or some special needs going on. As all of us see different students throughout the building, it's a time where we can meet once a week to share about some of the students' needs to make sure we're all on the same And some of the next steps, first, we would love to be able to continue the current security personnel structure that's in place. Mrs. Marine has led the charge with our PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Program, which is basically a program that's designed to just increase positivity and pride within your school building. Another program that's been put out is Prepare, which is a program that addresses the needs of students that may have witnessed a traumatic event, either in the building or on school grounds. And then, one that's not listed there, which was mentioned earlier, is TCIS, Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for Schools. It's a training that Aviva Kafka brought to us this past summer. Our 812 staff, resource monitors, and some teachers were trained in it. And basically, what this does is it gives adults in the building the training to be able to de-escalate a student who has become enraged or angry and be able to kind of bring them down to not make matters worse. So, at this time, we'll answer any questions that any of you may have.
First of all, thank you, a very good report, very good information, and it was to the point. Thank you. Any questions we have?
I think I had a question, looking at the graphs, but I think it's been answered, but I need to, the 2013, 2014 reporting point is up to what date? It's not been projected through the whole year, it is an actual number based on some date?
Yes, I pulled those numbers, I want to say Region's Week, so probably the second or third week in January.
All right, so we could expect those numbers to go up by another 40% between now and June if we stayed at the same rate?
I hope they go up lower, but, yeah, that would be a safe assumption.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had one question about the Raptor system. You mentioned that it prints a badge with a picture on it?
Yes, that's correct.
That person's picture, are those pictures kept anywhere?
No, those pictures are, we, the individuals leave the building with them on, most of the time, we have a waste disposal basket.
I meant electronically.
Oh, no, electronically? No.
So, it just prints it, and then you delete the file?
Yeah, it prints it, and it's...
Because I would have a problem if we're keeping pictures of people.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
And now, we will have the athletic facilities update. I assume that's Wayne. Tonight, we're going to present on the athletic facilities recommendations. We're lucky enough to complete, or near completion of our athletic upgrades at FDR, and with that, certainly is going to come responsibility, oversight, and some things that we need to consider as we move forward towards our spring season and opening up the doors to our track, to the community and to our students. So, many key players met for many months, you know, during the fall, as the track started to come together. We had administrators at the high school, we had teachers, we had coaches, facilities and operations folks, we had, you know, key players who do scheduling with regards to our facilities, and myself that met and kind of brainstormed, now that we have this upgraded facility, how are we going to take care of it and maintain it? So, after years of planning and due diligence, as I think Christine Jones mentioned before, you know, that these folks started coming to our Facility Steering Forum, and my first year here, almost nine years ago, folks were telling me about the track and, you know, what the needs were there. So, a lot of folks and a lot of energy went into making sure that we have that put together, so we're there, and now we got to take care of it. So, with the support of our community, we've certainly successfully constructed a safe and appropriate high school athletic facility at FDR High School. So, our recommendations for how to protect this asset and maximize its availability to our students and communities are as follows. So, in order to appropriately maintain and protect the athletic facility, we have to think about a lot of things. And first and foremost, our district team's utilization of facilities. A future slide mentions that that's, you know, the primary purveyors of the field. Certainly, the community is a primary purveyor of the use of the track. Outside group utilization, and how do we manage that? Hours of operations will be covered. Our rules and regulations were carefully thought out and put together and posted up around the new facility. What our fee structure will look like for outside for-profit agencies to utilize our facilities, and then what might the staffing requirements look like to run events and protect our asset. So, as I mentioned, the complex was built first and foremost for our students. Our student athletes will always be given the first priority for this facility, whether it's football, or lacrosse, or soccer, or any of the teams, the track and field that have a direct utilization of that will certainly be given the first priority. Moving to the next slide, we talk about the track use. The track will be available for the community use before and after school hours and weekends based on availability. And certainly, if there's a major track and field event going on on a Sunday afternoon, the ability for the community to utilize the track as a, you know, as a jogging or walking facility would be, you know, not available on that day, but any other day, it would be. And this only applies to the track itself, the community use is for the track and not for the field. The new synthetic turf field and other areas in the complex must be formally applied for and approved for for usage. We'll talk about that in a further slide. Our general hours of operation, based on availability, the track will be open from dawn to dusk, weather permitting, you know, certainly if there's, you know, a couple feet of snow out there, it will not be open. The track will not be available to the community during school hours, and that's important because the gym classes and the other folks within the high school will be utilizing those things at that point in time. But before school starts, after school starts, and then, you know, on the weekends, certainly we'll have availability. And we plan to have the complex available for the community and outside groups' use this spring. As soon as we formalize these things into policy or into, you know, a general acceptable rules of use, and everybody agrees on this, we can open the doors for the outside use. So, moving on to the non-district outside group use, this is a little bit different. For organized utilization of the facility, the proper building use application must be filled out and approved. And we have a specific document that would be filled out. We may have a little bit of a different approval path for the track and field, but basically the same exact way you would utilize a building, a room, or anything else, or just more considerations to be taken into consideration, whether or not you need a timekeeper or a scorekeeper, you need to have the press box open, or you need, you know, different people to help park, or, you know, all these different things that Elliot will talk about in a minute, will be included on that buildings' use application for the athletic complex. And special considerations will be given to local nonprofit organizations from time to time. Folks want to have a walkathon, or they want to have a good benefit, as long as they cover, you know, the basic costs of, you know, to man it, you know, we wouldn't charge the fee that Elliot will go over in just a minute. So, with that being said, we're going to talk about signs, and Elliot's going to take over from here.
Thank you, Wayne. Some basic examples of the signs that have been posted, some of these are quite obvious, some of the rules and regulations are specific to the type of facility that we have, both the synthetic turf and the track. You can see the no pets, no dogs or any other pets, specific areas noted for players and officials, no smoking in and around the area, and that applies to all school grounds, but we wanted to make specific note here as far as spectators and attendees. The surveillance notice as well as authorized personnel, again, for those very specific areas, including the press box and the officials' scoring areas. Recommended fee structure for the commercial utilization of the complex is as follows. We've estimated the cost of two hours for $1,000, $2,000 for four hours of usage, and a full day of usage at $4,000. Additional charges will be levied for lights, scoreboard operators, and security based on the size and scope of function. Our seating capacity is upwards of 2,000 people. Obviously, if you're having 100 folks watching a Pop Warner football game, for example, your security needs are a little bit different than a full-scale... your security needs are a little bit different than a full-scale soccer or football game where you're having over 1,000 people attending. So our rates will have à la carte add-ons as well. And these rates were not something that we just pulled out of the sky. We researched them around our county as well as our neighboring areas and school districts to find out what the community could support, as well as what the going rates are in similarly designed facilities.
I just want to add something there. We didn't go to the lower end, we didn't go to the higher end. We went somewhere around the middle to ensure on that we're not the lowest price, so that we become the bargain place where everybody's going to go. And we're not the highest, and we wanted to come somewhere that was fair. And that's not for teams, school district teams, it's not for nonprofits. It's just for commercial, for-profit people that want to come in and use our track.
Thank you, Wayne. Staffing model is illustrated as follows. For groups of 1 to 100 people, we're requiring one field monitor, one security person, and no parking attendants. We add a security person for groups of 100 to 500 attendees. Over 500, we bring in an additional field monitor and security person, as well as two parking attendants. And over 1,000, we're looking at two field monitors, four security personnel, and again, two parking attendants. And this is really logical based on the facility's design. Your field monitor is your facilities and operations person who's here to make sure that everything runs smoothly, if there's any hiccups with the facility itself and the operation itself. Security personnel is really for keeping everybody behaving as they should. And the parking attendants are only required over 500 people just because of the volume of traffic in and out. We want to keep everybody safe and moving quickly. The prices for these staff members are illustrated below. The security person at $31.25 an hour. The field monitor and the parking attendants also could be covered by custodians, and that would be $35 an hour. And your scoreboard operator and announcer are $45 an hour, much like the rates that Wayne quoted before... I'm sorry, a game on the last one for the scoreboard and announcer. These are going rates for similar positions in the area. And quite often, they were designed just to cover the district's cost. There's not really a profit associated with that. That's our cost to supply these people for the event. Maintenance and oversight of the athletic complex. With this expanded and improved athletic facility, additional maintenance and upkeep is required. You can't add more work to the same personnel and not fall short somewhere. So the new field and the new complex does take a bit more attention, specific attention, skilled attention, to keep our investment well taken care of and well preserved for the long term. And with that, we do recommend hiring a part-time groundskeeper to serve as the primary FDR field groundskeeper. And that field monitor position that we noted on the matrix earlier directly illustrates this individual, for the most part. Funding of the groundskeeper will result in no addition to the district's budget. With careful analysis, we estimate the fee schedule and the reduction of overtime funds to cover the part-time groundskeeper salary. We just moved around what we had existing, looking at how much overtime we spent in the fall, what's already allocated, and what would be mitigated by having someone that's staffed for this purpose, rather than bringing our own people back for extra hours to come up with the budgeted funds for this position. The duties of the new groundskeeper will be to tend to the athletic facility during weekends, covering non-district events on the weekends, as well as our own sporting events in those time periods. Regular season evening games as well. We often have Friday night football games or Thursday night soccer games. This person would be on a flexible schedule, primarily for weekend supervision, but would also assist us at night. And if we had to bring in multiple staff members, that's one person who's not on overtime for that event that would be running point on taking care of this facility. And then performing maintenance and operation duties in the off-seasons. There's still work to be done, even when we're not using the field, and this person would help do some of the heavy lifting for us in the off-season. And some of that heavy lifting directly relates to the snow and ice that's on the ground right now. And being part of our groundskeeping crew would put this person into those positions as well.
Okay, so a special thank you goes out. The track and field, it was a tremendous amount of work, tremendous amount of efforts amongst the community. Our teachers, our administrators, our athletic department, the Board of Education, everybody deserves a big thank you. And our community has really joined together to make this district a better place with regards to the facility, and really made it a reality. So kudos to everybody, and we thank everybody for being involved, for their extraordinary efforts and ongoing fundraising events. I mean, the fundraising goes on as we speak to get concession stands and ticket booths. I mean, the work is still going on. I'd be remiss if we didn't thank the Hyde Park on Track, who really was a driving force in bringing some of these things together, our second vote. You know, it's been a long time coming, and it really looks great. So if you get a chance, if you haven't gotten a chance, when things start to thaw out, we encourage you to get up to the high school, take a look. And we look forward to an upcoming season as our students and community are able to utilize the new and improved area. And we hope that you'll take these recommendations that we put forward tonight to make sure that our asset is protected. Thank you, Wayne. Elliot, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, just one quick comment. You know, I don't know if you have the answer for it right away, but something to think about. One of the things that, while I wasn't on the board, so I could sell it all I wanted, but I wanted to talk to people about the advantage of the new field and track facility, but particularly the field. I mean, one of the, I don't want to say a selling point, but like, I understand there's obviously different kind of work in maintaining this facility. Certainly, there's a lot of work probably making sure that that track's in good condition, because when you had a piece of junk cinder track, you didn't give a lot of thought to what was there. But the field itself, you know, there's obviously an offset, because there's other work we're not doing anymore. There was a lot of mowing, watering, fertilizing, lining, all this other nonsense that goes along with a grass field. And we know that, obviously, we don't have that anymore. But you know, one of the things that kind of sold me on the project was the notion of, yeah, I knew there was going to be maintenance, but I also knew there was going to be other stuff that's not being done anymore, because you don't have to mow a football field anymore. And you don't have to fertilize it, you don't have to water it, you don't have to make sure it's in operating condition for a game. But I also recognize it's probably offset by the work. So I just didn't know if you had given that some consideration to kind of say, okay, well, yeah, we're going to add a half-time person perhaps, and these are the lists of duties, but we're also avoiding costs by, what did it cost to mow the lawn? And water it and fertilize it and do all the things we had to do to it, plant grass if necessary. There's got to be some avoided cost as well that's got to offset the additional cost. I don't know if you had given that any thought?
There is, and I can speak specifically to that. The field itself, the turf field, the football, soccer, lacrosse field, for example, doesn't have to be mowed, obviously, does have to be monitored regularly. There's a lot of seams that can come loose that can not only be physically detrimental to the facility, but also create a ship hazard for our student athletes. So the field monitor's presence at the games, day-to-day, is going to be making sure that the field integrity is maintained. Seams, the rubber piling that goes in that's evenly distributed, that has to be periodically augmented in those heavy traffic areas, for example. That's the new stuff that would be replacing the mowing. The mowing is not as intensive there, but we also have to remember we did add sod throwing pits around the grandstand areas. So there's more grass in other places, although we removed the grass from the field area. So there's still a mowing component. And again, our regular high school caretakers would see to most of that. The field monitor is really there to make sure that the new field-specific maintenance is being done, as well as the rules enforcement. I mean, we have to make sure that there's no food, no gum, no non-rubber-soled shoes, and that this person's going to be an active presence from our department to make sure that not only are our attendees, but our staff and our students are doing the right thing to take care of our areas as well.
Fair enough.
Question. How many of your staff has been, I'm sure it was included after the install, were training in how to maintain the turf?
Myself and Jim Hubel, my assistant director, worked with the installer to train our groundskeepers. So all of my groundskeepers have been instructed in proper turf and track maintenance for the facility.
And there's obviously warranties on it.
Yes, sir. There are.
When you mentioned the seams, how long a warranty would come up for seams?
I don't know offhand exactly. They don't always warranty your specific areas. It's a rather quick fix if you get on top of it right away with the right adhesives that they provide to us or recommend.
So is it something that you could do in-house?
Absolutely. Generally, what happens, and I'll give you the example that was given to us, is in the lacrosse crease, that round area right surrounding the goal, you have multiple intersecting lines from all of our sports. You have soccer lines, football lines, and the two lacrosse lines, all kind of intersecting. And where that round circle comes across the horizontal lines, you'll tend to get corners pulling up and kind of dog-eering, just because of your scrums that happen in those areas. So these are the kind of things that we went through with A-Turf, and they were very attentive to us, not just at the training, but offering to come back if we need them to as part of the contract to say, if you're not sure how to handle this, after we've taught you X, Y, and Z approaches, we'll come back and help you out.
In the presentation, there was a, you state that the track won't be available during the school hours. I'm assuming that's because we're anticipating that it's going to be used by the PE program?
Yes, that was the logic behind that, is that, and I think Wayne alluded to that, that our students would be using it during the school day. And before then thereafter, unless there's an event precluding it, it would be open to the public.
I would just hope that we'd monitor that and really see that that is in fact happening. I mean, you only have so much, when I think about you, the PE program, there's a lot of elements to the PE program that aren't going to happen on the track. And I see the track being a huge asset to the community. And the best time that particularly our senior citizens could use it would be more during the day. So I would hope that we'd at least review that on an ongoing basis to see whether or not we need to be quite so staunch at saying that the track isn't available during the day, that perhaps it could be some way to indicate whether the track is available or not to our taxpayers during the day.
I think the only thing you also would have to consider that is, and of course, the particular group of people that you mentioned probably would not be in this category, but you also have to consider the security risk of having outside people on the property when kids are there. So whether they're using the facility or not, you don't know if you'd want anybody being able to walk in and wander around on school property.
It really becomes a question of whether, but I don't think we try to maintain a closed... I mean, do we try to indicate that we have a closed campus at this point where people are not allowed?
Well, right now, the consensus of the group that met was that the community use would be, starting early morning and when school starts, and then resume at 2:00. So there's certainly some daylight there. I think we were kind of along the same lines of where Kevin was going, was not mixing community with the students out there, just allowing...
I just wondered, do we have policy in place for that? I mean, for instance, if somebody wanted to come in and just walk around the football field during the day, not the turf field, but let's say they went to one of the elementary schools and wanted to take a walk around on the grounds, do we prohibit that? I don't think we do. I don't think we do. So the whole security idea kind of goes out the window.
No, I know, but I'm not so sure that's a behavior I want to encourage, though. I mean, the average citizen that wants to use the property, I think that's great. But then, how do you keep track of the guy that really doesn't belong there, that you don't want wandering around the school property during the day? That's something we have to look at, I think.
I can say certainly at the elementary school, because kids are on the playground, any adult who hasn't checked into the office, who's not a staff member, who's not a parent visitor, is approached and not allowed to be...
So we do ask people to leave the...
On the elementary, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I recognize that folks in the community pay for this facility, but the safety of students has to come first.
I don't disagree. I'm not jeopardizing students...
The vast majority of people that would probably come and walk around the facility are, you use the word harmless, and not a security threat. But you don't want to be diverting school administrative and staff attention trying to keep tabs on, all right, who's out there, they're fine, they're not up to no good, we don't have to worry about them, versus who's that guy lurking around with binoculars or whatever?
I would just encourage, just to be clear, as to what we are, one way or the other, because...
You know, I never really thought about it, because apparently I don't spend time wandering around school property without anybody knowing I'm there. I just, it's not something I would want to encourage, whether we have a policy or not, you know, but so...
Just one other question. Do we have the capability to clear snow from the field? Should an odd storm come up and an event needs to take place?
Something that I've been looking into since the installation. The short answer is, right now, I don't have the equipment necessary, but we do understand the process involved as we go into next season, should that become an issue. I know our spring starts, sports start...
Drive by the Maris Field, they plow that with something. I don't know what they do with it. A brush thing?
They use brushes, or what they'll do is they'll... One of the quick and dirty solutions is to put a length of pipe on a short blade on a tractor, a lightweight tractor, and use that type of a system to plow it. We've explored that option with our existing equipment, because we don't want to have to buy something specifically for that purpose. But I am looking at buying shorter snow blades for some of our four-wheeled vehicles, golf carts and the like, some of the smaller tractors. So with that in mind, we would be looking to employ some of that, because in a November football game, it's kind of fun to play in the snow if you can get it cleared.
All right, thank you.
One other question, Elliot. I'm hoping we will have specific signage to identify. I'm specifically thinking of the period of time prior to the start of school, where community parking might be concentrated over towards the main stand area, where there's going to be some handicap parking and stuff like that, so that we don't have a mix of students and community members trying to get into the main parking area where the students are looking for their assignments in parking and stuff like that.
We do have additional signs that we haven't put up yet, only because of certain details, the specific hours of operation, as well as where we're going to designate these spots. We did, part of the capital project was add spaces to that tennis court handicap parking area that were gravel spaces extended off of the paved handicaps. So we could definitely use that area for that specific purpose and put signage in accordingly.
Any other questions? Finally, we'll move on to 6.7, Veterans Tax Credit. As, I might as well say upfront, as I said at the last meeting that we held, I am a disabled veteran. I am in favor of giving veterans a break. I've been complimented for that stand. I have also been told that I should not vote for, nor should I have anything to do with the discussion because of that. I might profit from that. I would also point out, though, that every decision that we make has to do with what our own taxes is, become anyway. So if I vote for something that reduces the budget, I benefit from that in my tax. So I'll have to check with the lawyers, but just say upfront. I also'd like to say upfront that I especially think that veterans that served in combat deserve this. I did not serve in combat. In fact, the Air Force gave me a career. I profited from being in the service. I got a nice job. I worked with computers, and I had a 45-year career with IBM. I do not need this exemption, and I won't take it. I have never taken a veteran's exemption. I don't need it. But there are people that do. But there are also people who may find it very difficult to pay an extra amount of money to make up that exemption. There are a number of ways that we may look at this. But I just wanted to point out, because this is a serious decision that the board has to make, and it is a board decision, I have recommended that we not make a decision until next year, so that we can gather more information and really know exactly what this is going to cost, specifically cost each and every taxpayer. And I think in this case, in my opinion, it's better to be cautious than to do something like New Paul's just did on Monday. They voted for it and have no idea how much it's going to cost. So that said, I will open up the discussion now that I've had my say. Does anybody else have anything they'd want to say relative to the merits? Or whether or not we should... Well, we have to postpone this because we haven't had a public hearing. And it has to be done by March 1st, so that's not going to happen. But I would like to hear what the other board members have to say about the exemption. And for those of you who don't know the specifics, there are three categories. There's a basic category, a default category, and a maximum category. And amongst those three categories, there are other subcategories, which are served during a war, served during combat, or disabled. And they all have different various amounts of... So, and they all, they all have different various, uh, amounts of, uh, exemptions. So.
I'd like to start out with saying thanks to the attendants here. There's a lot of vets out here and our friends and family of. And I thank you for your service as well as the current, if you're currently in the armed forces. I had a dad that was in World War II, uh, two brothers and a nephew that were in, were in the Marine Corps. I didn't, I didn't serve at all. This is going to be a difficult decision to make because, uh, good for the vets with the extra exemption, but, uh, it kind of hurts the other taxpayers. So, it's something we really have to look out. Well, and look at the impact on the other taxpayers to absorb that difference. Wayne's coming up with numbers for us, so we'll be able to look at things like that. So, waiting for next year will give us time to review. I also believe that this should be a public referendum rather than a board decision. I think the public itself should vote on this rather than the board, board of seven.
Okay, as I understand it, that's not legal. It must be a board decision. We can have a referendum and, and get the opinion of the, uh, committee, but we are not bound by any referendum that says one thing or another, whether it's.
I didn't say we're bound by it.
Okay, all right, just, just one, I just wanted to make that clear.
I, I think that, you know, this is, nobody wants to take anything away from the veterans. I mean, we appreciate what the veterans have done for this country. I have many siblings that are veterans, retired military, served during Vietnam primarily. But it's a difficult situation because anytime we give a tax credit to one, it means it's coming out of the pocket of someone else. And, uh, and we certainly have a, a broad spectrum of, of economics here in town and, um, a, a little, a little benefit to someone can be a huge pain to someone else. So, uh, you know, we've got to look at that carefully. I think the best thing that, that I see, and you know, and obviously we can't make a decision on this tonight because there's no, we haven't had the, um, all the process in place. I think the best thing we could do is, I, I think we need to put together a schedule of how we're going to move through the process so it's clear that everybody has an understanding of what the expectations are. You know, when will we get a, I think we had a public hearing actually scheduled, but for February thirteenth? Did we, did we have a public hearing scheduled? I think that was, we had a snow day, so we weren't able to, to conduct it.
We, we had talked about it. At that point, um, the superintendent and I, Dr. Rycheck had met and, um, we were discussing the possibility of postponing it for a year because of the short timeframe.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
But we would have need, needed two public hearings within ten days.
Yeah, okay. So, so I think my, my position on this is, is let's, let's deal with it. Let, you know, we've got, uh, we're not going to deal with it by the March first deadline, but let's put a timeline together where we do deal with it in a timely manner so that, uh, it doesn't fall by the wayside and become a rush sometime in the future. And, um, I would just charge us with that and, you know. I like the idea of trying to get as much information from the public or a sense from the public, whether it's through a referendum or whether it's simply through a public hearing.
Well, couldn't we just have a vote, uh, at the next budget vote, a yes or no, I support this, kind of a question?
I would think we could. I mean, even though it's non-binding, I think we could have that.
It's a non-binding, you know, we could, I think, I think it would be important to, um, you know, get, get some information out to the community because it's important for, and if we, if we want to seek, um, the community's input to help us make that decision, um, it's important they have all the facts and can, you know, because, you know, as I said before, and, and first of all, and to echo Gary's comments and Perry's comments too, you know, I want to thank everybody who, who has served, uh, and I see plenty in this room who have done, um, you know, obviously marvelous things so we can live the great lives we live, we live now, uh, in this country. And I thank you again for your service. Just from a political point of view, that, you know, it's a wonderful gift that, um, the legislature in Albany has handed and provided an opportunity to our veterans. It really is. The reality is they, what they don't say about it, other than making it available, they don't tell you where the money comes from. They conveniently leave that part out. And it's, it's not like, if, if, for example, just make up a number that, you know, two hundred thousand dollars worth of, 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 and I'm just pulling up, making a number up, two hundred thousand dollars worth of, of, uh, tax revenue we don't collect because of exemptions would be, if it was made up by the state government or the federal government, it'd be, hey, that's marvelous, great. You know, we take the money from here instead of from there, everybody's happy. But unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. And the, the burden for, you know, just like anybody else, it's the same thing when you're assessed value. And I think we'll be hearing from somebody about assessed value shortly. When this assessed value changes on your home, well, if now they're collecting less tax from me because of the property, my, my assess, my assessment went down, guess what? It just comes from somebody else. And granted, on a, on a small scale, that's hardly noticeable. And as I've always said, and we don't know what the numbers are or potentially could be, and I'm only speaking for my, my own self, you know, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, I could swallow that and be glad to do it. Five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars more on my tax bill to make up the difference because, you know, if, depending what the quantity was, I, I think I couldn't swallow that. I suspect a lot of people couldn't swallow that. So, we, we have to really just understand what the numbers are, um, you know, to make sure that, you know, it's, you know, shifting a burden unfairly to other people. Like I said, there's probably a, a number that the, most of the community could say, yep, I'd pay a little bit more to give a veteran a break. I could swallow X, but if it's going to be X times ten, maybe not, you know? And I think it's important that we know what that, that number really is so that people have an accurate, uh, and, and that'll take time to, to put together and it'll cost a lot of it speculative. This, this does require a veteran to, to apply for it. So, it's not like it's instant. We've got a general idea from the county, from those who have already applied for an exemption from the municipalities, the towns, for example. So, we've got a general idea, but it could be many more, or it may not be as, it, it really, you know, you just don't know. So, but you can kind of think of what potentially could be a.
It won't be less, but it could be, it could be more.
Right.
Is there a difference anywhere in all of this between someone who was drafted and didn't necessarily want to do this? And someone who volunteered to get a career?
No.
Because in my mind, those are two different soldiers. They did a great job, but if, if you were taken from your home, whether you wanted to go or not, and forced to do this, I think we owe you more personally.
Well, there's, there's two schools of thought to that. Obviously, the, the people that were drafted, obviously, they stood up and were counted and, and are great Americans. But quite frankly, this country, this country's been in a lot of peril and it's now an all volunteer force. So, I can't thank the people that have stood up and been counted enough.
I'm not trying to belittle. No, no, I'm just. I just think that when it's imposed upon you, that you have now been, we owe you.
I can't make a distinction, to be honest with you.
Well, I think I could.
I can't, that's just me.
I, I would like us to, uh, consider perhaps creative ways to, uh, fund this. A budget reduction, a partial budget reduction, uh, and, you know, something that, uh, you know, suppose it's, um, suppose it is fifty dollars. If the school bu, if the school budget could be reduced enough so that that's down to twenty-five dollars, then maybe that would be more acceptable. I'm not saying we should do this. I'm just saying that maybe there are other ways that we should investigate how, how to fund this. If, if the state's not going to help us, um, and it's difficult for, um, families on fixed incomes, well, retired, uh, people who, uh, aren't getting close to living raises even anymore. You know, if we truly want to do this, then we got to figure out a way to do it. That's, I think we have to explore every, every method that, that might be available to us.
I, I'd just like to comment on, uh, Kevin says, we don't know, the, the state didn't tell us how to provide the money. The fact is, having read the, the regulations as it was published, I think they've, they've, they not only told us how to provide the money, they put us in a box that is a very painful box that we've been dealing with for the last three years because it gets us into the same situation we have each year when we pass a budget and announce a percentage increase on a tax levy that suddenly blows up into totally varied numbers depending on the various districts that we get, that get involved because it, because it's affecting assessed values. Uh, one of the things I've, I've begun to realize over the last two days of rereading this for the third and fourth time is what we vote for here in Hyde Park is not only going to affect what Hyde Park residents have chosen to do and what they are willing to support, but it will also commit Clinton, Reinbeck, and other areas to paying more because it's an assessed value change. And it's, you know, just recently, in the last day or so, I suddenly found, you know, hey, at least we've got one congressman out there that's thinking. And I, I, I'm, I don't want to mention the name because I'm not sure exactly which one it was, but he's been saying the same thing. He, he sent out a blivet and said, I, we, you know, a, a, a bullet saying, it may be a blivet at, at some point in time, but a bullet saying, you know, we need to look at that, we need to look at it very carefully. Because what the state has effectively done is come up with an idea that they feel is justified and worthy, and I totally agree with them. We need to recognize these people in any way we can. It, it, it's such a great feeling to my mind to, to be in places I've seen, you know, on a daily basis. I'll walk into a store and somebody will walk into a store wearing one of the caps that are, are people here or shirted or something like that. And other people will just walk out, walk up to them, shake their hand and says, I'd like to thank you for my, for your service and walk on. But he pointed out the fact that the state has done that. The only thing they haven't stepped to the plate on is they're not the ones carrying the ball and they're not the ones funding it. They're coming out and saying, we need to do something for our state, we need to do something for our people. But I'm not going to accept the political responsibility of doing it with our budget. We're going to put it back on the burden of the towns and communities, and that's where it's going to fall. So, when we pass a budget and we, we select a, a, an interest rate or a, an assessment rate, we're in the box we're in right now because of the difference between the five communities that make up our, our paying people for our budget, four of whom have done a reassessments of all of their properties and one who hasn't. And we, we suffered the pains for, for two, three years now. Because Hyde Park has chosen not to fund a reassessment, the burden shifts dramatically to the other towns. And I hear it every time and I want people to understand, besides everybody else that comments on me and stops me, I've got a son that lives in the town of Poughkeepsie. And I get a rat-a-frat-a-pack-a-loomer every year from him because of it, you know? And it's, it's really hurting him. He's a, he's a first-time homeowner, uh, bought the house at a time when it's gone down. He's got a mortgage that, what do they call it, underwater?
Water, yeah.
Trying to refinance when they keep saying, hey, we've got this program that allows you to refinance. And year after year, he says, yeah, they can refinance, but you can't. And he says, why can't I? He says, because you've been paying your bills. You know, it's a strange situation, but it keeps growing and circling this way. So, there's a lot of things going on. But the fact of the matter is, if we adopt this plan, we're also going to affect, uh, commit people in Clinton, Red Hook, and other areas to paying part of this bill that we're offering as a community here in Hyde Park. So, that, this all needs to be discussed and I think it really, truly has to be, uh, put in dollars and cents figures to understand exactly what the impact is. And, and a straw poll to indicate the support of the community for the, for the support of these figures might give us a, a ballpark because they didn't say that this is what you can do. They said, this is an average of what you can do, but they gave us a wide range. We can lower those values, we can raise those values, and we, we have to come up with the numbers. And I wasn't unaware until just now that the, uh, the board must pass it. But it, the only effective legal way to change this plan is for the Board of Education to support it. And if we go to any kind of a vote, it is just a, you know, a straw poll to where we're going. I did not catch that in the readings I had and, uh, that was a very clear thing to say.
I'd also like to point out that, um, of the three levels, uh, if you start at the highest, you can never bring it down.
That's right.
Right, you're, you're stuck.
Yeah, and it's not, let's not say you're stuck. Let's just say that if you're at the highest level, you're at the highest level.
Can't go down.
You can't go down.
So, if you, if you make a mistake, you're committed to that mistake. Whereas if we wait and get all of the figures so we know what we're committing to, at least we're making a, uh.
However, I like Perry's idea about, uh, a process and, uh, a, a schedule to get us from here to a, if we want to call it a referendum, but between that time to get exact data so that we can publish and so that the, the community can see. We've seen preliminary stuff and it, it's, it's troubling to me. And I'd like to make sure that we have accurate data and that it's published and that people can see it. And we should have, um, I don't know if we should have a subcommittee or if we, but we should certainly have a, um, some kind of a timeline so that we can put out information so that the community knows what we're, we're, uh, we're dealing with. I mean, I'm reluctant to do what, to put out what we have now because it's, as far as I know, it's not accurate. It's almost accurate, right, Wayne? But it's, it's hard, it's.
There's so many, um, different things that we don't know enough about with regards to, you know, we're using thirteen, fourteen figures, which, uh, you know, this wouldn't take place until the fourteen, fifteen tax roll. One of the things that could occur is if this was passed now, how many people would sign up for it between now and then? So, whatever the.
Well, it could be a lot of people like myself who never.
Right.
Put in for it, uh, and said, oh, I'm going to get on this.
Right, and how would that adjust? Right now, I have it as if thirteen, fourteen, you know, based on, you know, based on assumptions that are made with regards to assessed values. And one of the other bigger, biggest things that we have to think about, and we've dealt with this before, is how the tax levies are portioned. There's folks probably in the audience tonight that are going to speak about, you know, how apportionment, and what I, what I say by apportionment is how the tax levy shifted from one town to another. And this very thing is, it could very well happen and, and, you know.
And affect that like a, uh, equal relation rate change.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, you know, one of the other things that, you know.
So, um, I'd, I'd like to, uh, to put a stake in the ground by the middle of April and be able to, to publish whatever we know by then on our website, maybe a newsletter, uh, something so that we, um, people will have a, a better idea of what they're giving us information on. If they're going to, if they're going to vote on a referendum, they've got to know what the heck the facts are.
Yeah, and I think people, you know, we should discuss it at, at a meeting too, leading up to that, so that people have the opportunity to ask questions about it. You know, if you do like a, a kind of like a public hearing, question and answer session.
Right, well, if we, uh, if, if we have that, that information, say, maybe the first week, I'll have to figure out, but in April, that then after that, after we publish this stuff, then we have, uh, some kind of public, uh, input, community meeting. I think that would work.
And I would anticipate that based on that community, uh, that public hearing, there will be questions asked or numbers questioned that we would have to go back and research. So, we're talking, I, I think we're talking on a commitment of at least two public hearings just to, just to clarify and make sure that all of the facts everybody's looking at are correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. But just remember, we have a budget to put out too.
Understand.
Exactly.
That's, that's goal number one is, is the budget and, um.
I, I think this points to some of the politicking that's gone on with the choice of time to present this information and, and put it forth, hoping that, you know, other people under the pressures of other things are going to be looking to do a, a whole bunch of other things. And, you know, it, it just bothers me that the, uh, everything seems to be a, a rush, crisis-type situation where there's no time for, for reasoned thoughts at times about some of these things. And I think at times it's a, it's a purposeful choice by some of the politicians to put us under that pressure.
I agree.
Actually, in that regard, I, there's one thing I would like to know. I mean, the law was changed in December. And yet, we didn't hear about it until two weeks ago. So, what's with that? You know?
Well, it's a little more than two weeks ago because two weeks ago was our, our last meeting, which got canceled.
All right, well, okay, a month, even a month ago.
Just to be fair, I mean, I don't want to make it sound like we just found out about it, right?
In February, so it's still.
Would have been late January.
It would have been nice to know in, you know.
When was the law passed? I don't remember.
Uh, December, I think.
It didn't say when in December though, and I'm not sure. So, that's another little bit of information. I'd, I'd really like to know if it just wasn't. It takes that long to wind its way down through, uh, to districts or what? Because it put us under a lot more pressure. It put, uh, other districts who said, oh, oh God, we got to do it right away. And they, they may have done, um, something that they wish they had have done differently, maybe even more or less, you know, so.
Doug, just, just, just a thought I've had and, and I, and I am sensitive to the fact that, you know. to the fact that, you know, we also have a budget that we've got to try to put together and have ready for a vote as well. And this is kind of a parallel process at this point, at best. Maybe it would be best if we could put together an ad hoc committee that could work on this. And I'd look at perhaps reaching beyond the board. And maybe there's veterans groups out there or any other group that, you know, and open it up so that we could get, you know, a broader spectrum of people involved in trying to analyze what, what we're getting and how to present it and...
Seems reasonable, much like the big or...
Yeah, yeah, just as we do with our, with our budget process, so that maybe we could reach out and get people who, you know, have a better understanding, you know, maybe somebody else has a better understanding of it, or a better... I mean, one of the, one of the unknowns is, how many people are there out there that aren't?
All right, let's, let's consider that and do a little research, come back next meeting and with a recommendation for a, either an ad hoc committee or not, depending on what, what we decide.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, you're on. May I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to point out that generally, speakers are restricted to three minutes. We will not keep you, we won't cut you off at three minutes. We want to hear your, your input, just be mindful to be courteous to other people who want to speak also. Thank you very much, all those in favor. We are now in public participation, and if you'd like to speak to us, please come to the mic.
Oh, and just to clarify too, for those who've never been here before, we don't engage in a dialogue, so we'll listen to everybody's comments and then we'll respond afterwards, so just so, we're not ignoring you.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Mike Athanas, I'm commander of Hyde Park American Legion, I'm a veteran, and I represent the veterans of Hyde Park and the surrounding areas by my own admission. I haven't got there okay on that, but I think they'll be all right with it. There are many veterans in the audience tonight, World War II veterans, Korean vets. I'm a Vietnam vet, there's veterans over there from Afghan and Desert Storm. So there's many veterans interested in this topic. Being in a Hyde Park American Legion, we don't ask for just anything, we also contribute. We contribute to the Roosevelt High School curriculum by sending two boys and a girl to girl, boys and girls state, so we are contributing to the community. We also send, we also give out three or four scholarships in the springtime. So we, we're not asking, we're also contributing. So it's not a one-way street.
Okay.
The veterans in this, in this group served the country, came back, got good jobs, contributed to the tax base of the country and our taxpayers. So they're not asking for something they, they didn't earn. We have Senator Gibson, our present senator, state senator, he co-sponsored this bill. He also is in very strong favor of it being implemented. So he has a very positive outlook to it, having this passed. So the government, I realize you, from your conversations, that you got the bill late. It was passed in about the middle of December, somewhere around the 12th or 14th. I don't have the exact date, but it was the middle of December, so it was kind of late. So probably the holidays kind of interfered with it passing down to the school boards, which I can, I can see that happening. And it is a very monumental thing to decide on, but I wholeheartedly hope that you will decide on it. There is, I can get you the figures on how many veterans there are in Hyde Park. If you need that figure, I can get it from the VA, all right? If you don't have that number. Right off the top of my head, I think there's like 20,000 in the county. And I think in Hyde Park, this is, don't hold me to this, I think there's around 2,000. But I, I can't guarantee that number without getting hard fact for it. But it is a substantial number, and it is, it will be an impact, I agree with that, but I also agree that these people deserve it. I know in our post, there are several members that are on fixed incomes, they don't have retirements, they're living on Social Security, and that things are tight, very, very tight. And they did serve the country. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope you do diligence on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to...
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little more. Is that okay? All right. Okay.
I want to thank you guys for your service, because I know it's tough, okay? Okay, my name is Bill Gannon, I live in the town of Clinton. I graduated in '68, and I was going to get drafted, and I joined the Navy, and that's why when you go to the town hall today, you know, a lot of those veterans, you know, during the Vietnam War era, you know, there's a ton of them, you know, we all served because we had to, or you went to Canada. Okay, but my question, I mean, I mean, not my question, but one thing I wanted to emphasize here right now is, I heard from the board, okay, but you're talking about a community. This is actually a school district. It's the Hyde Park, okay? We're talking about Clinton, Pleasant Valley, you know, and I'm not here for myself, I'll be honest with you, because you guys know I've been working on the side about the, I mean, about these issues, but I just wanted to read this real fast. Okay, I am here to talk about the veteran discount and the unfair tax levy increases of 10% just in this past year for the other four towns, okay? I was surprised to find out my school taxes went up $1,000, out-of-pocket cost, okay? And I also read in the local newspaper, now not to pick on anybody, but one of the board members said, and it was quoted, how the veteran discount is transferring a tax burden from one class to another. But doesn't the school district already do that already, okay, for low-income senior citizens? Okay, depending on your income, up to 50%, there is seniors in this town and school district that are being helped out by other taxpayers. And I also wanted to mention, hasn't the town of Hyde Park already pushed school tax levy to the other class of people in the other towns by refusing to do a revaluation? And I'm told by the state, and I'm here now because I want to be on camera, because I've been, every meeting, I've been dealing with Albany since 1987. And doesn't Hyde Park push the tax levy within their own town to lower and middle-class taxpayers? By not doing a reassessment, people don't know this, but up by Vanderbilts, okay, they sold a piece of property for $1.4 million. And because Hyde Park never went through a revaluation, you have to pay the previous owner's assessed value. So $1.4 million, this property is sold, and they're paying, it's a market price right now, $288,000. I pay more taxes on a $30,000 home than this guy's paying on a $1.4 million home. Okay, so here's my thing I wanted to mention too, is, okay, why would you not want to help Gold Star Mothers, current homeowner vets, and others who may return back home from their honorable service and sacrifice to purchase homes in Hyde Park? You know, right now, when we voted on that track, the biggest selling point is, is going to increase the value of your homes. The only homes that increase the values is the other four towns that are at 100% equalization. Because when you buy a house, a town, I mean, like a home in my town, you pay what you paid for it. In Hyde Park, if you buy a home in foreclosure for $300,000 and it's worth $500, you still got to pay taxes on $500. So they're really hurting the younger people buying cheaper homes. Because maybe the owner wants to get out of town, he might be paying a little bit more, you know? Okay, now, but the other issue I wanted to talk about, okay, was the tax levy. It is unfair how Hyde Park has now pushed their tax levy onto Clinton, Poughkeepsie, Pleasant Valley, and Reinbeck. Over the past years, I have met some of you and discussed, the town has not done a reassessment. Now this issue has caused other towns within the district to see 30% increases since 2006. Back in 2006 to 2013, Hyde Park's tax levy for our school district only went up $3 million. In my town, it went up 2.25 million, which is a 30% increase. So what happens here, you know, like every year we do a school budget, you know, because Hyde Park don't do a reassessment, the town, everybody, you know, but there's, I mean, game's going on here. So what happened was, I wrote a letter to the Attorney General. And I just got a letter a few weeks ago, they, they transferred over to the, the Public Integrity Bureau. And I'll be honest with you, I've been working with the state, and the state came down, they met with the town of Hyde Park, they met with the supervisor, you know, Wayne's aware of all this. The state can't make a town do a reassessment. But they have known going back three supervisors that the town needs to be reevaluated so that everybody within this town and the school district and the county pays their fair share. Okay? And I wanted to let it be known, because I don't know what's going to happen here, but the point is, I mean, right now you're thinking about a budget. I'm going to tell you right now, if you add up all the people in Clinton and Pleasant Valley and the town of Poughkeepsie that are fed up, you might not get a budget passed anymore. Because it's unfair. You know, and I'm not asking like myself, I mean, trying to get a 10%, because I'm a disabled vet, okay? So I would get 10% and maybe another 30%. I'm not here for myself. Okay, like Dan mentioned about his son, okay? My son bought a house in Pleasant Valley about a year ago. He bought it there because he pays taxes of what he paid for his home. He bought a nice starter home, and their tax levy is spread throughout Arlington because they're all at 100%. It's fair. So all I'm asking you is, you know, to please look at the veteran discount, because there is veterans that need it, and there is senior citizens that get up to 50% discount now, plus they get the star. Okay, I know of, I mean, like I know of a woman that lives in this area, her school taxes are maybe $300. It's because she deserves it. Low income, her husband passed away, she's still getting that county veteran, you know, tax break, you know? But I just wanted to let it be known, the problems that I'm talking about, it ain't your fault. So, but what I wanted to ask you is, why can't the district write a letter? Okay, why do I have to go to Kevin Gibson's meeting in Hyde Park and speak up? Okay, why do I have to write letters to Albany? Somebody has to know what's going on in this town. Okay, Mark Malinero, and I've been on the, you know, emailing back and forth, you know, let me tell you this, okay, but you know the old Schatz Federal Building down there? Two people bought, bought that property for a dollar each, because it was a hazardous waysite. Mark Malinero and Ron Hex, they just found out, for the last seven years, they haven't paid any taxes, and they're renting out buildings. $7 million the school district could have been getting, helping us with our tax levy.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I can't speak to the facts and figures that Mr. Gannon spoke to, but my concern is with the inequality between tax rates in the town of Clinton related to the different school districts in the town...
I'm sorry, would you state your name?
It's Dick Coller, C-O-L-L-E-R, and Deer Ridge Drive in the town of Clinton.
Thank you.
I did send a couple weeks ago a one-page summary of my concerns, I don't, you have it?
We have it.
Okay, very good. And from what I've heard the board say earlier, you're well aware of the problem, problems, I should say. Hyde Park's, the Hyde Park School District's tax rate, which is spread amongst the five towns that were mentioned, is among the highest, it's the third highest in the county of the 13 school districts centered in Dutchess County. Hyde Park is third from the top, it's within pennies of the very top rate. And those rates, by the way, run about two to one, from highest to lowest, within the county. Obvious, I'll call it in, inequality. And the difference, which I think is, is the reason for this, is that Hyde Park is a relatively poor school district. Hyde Park is full of relatively inexpensive properties which house people with children. If we compare Hyde Park with the Millbrook School District, for example, we're looking at a two-and-a-half to one ratio between assessable property, real property, and, well, just that. Millbrook's assessed tax base is on the order of 1.6, sorry, it's, on the order of $1.5 million per student of assessable taxable real estate versus Hyde Park's 616,000 dollars per student. Quite a difference. Now, the state tries to correct this with the state aid formula, but it, it doesn't quite get there. So what we're asking is that you try, as a school district, to correct this inequality with the, with the state. At this point, Noreen would like to address what we have done with Terry Gibson's office and with DeeDee Burnett's office in, in line with correcting, trying to get some improvement to the state aid formula. Can she follow me?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Hi, Noreen Coller, Deer Ridge Drive, Town of Clinton, Hyde Park School District. First, I want to thank the members of the school board and the staff that are here. Dick and I support the public schools very strongly. We think it's a very important public function. You're doing very important work, so we want to thank you very wholeheartedly for this. However, I want to talk briefly about three weeks ago, a public forum that Senator Terry Gibson held at the Hyde Park Town Hall. Dick and I attended to talk about the inequality in the school taxes for people who are in the town of Clinton. The first person in the audience that got up to speak at the forum was a member of the Clinton Town Board. We were not expecting him to be there. But what did he want to talk to Senator Gibson about? Inequality in the school tax rates of the communities in the town of Clinton. There are four school districts, those of us in Hyde Park pay a much higher percentage, a much higher rate of our taxes to the schools. In fact, we came in last August when we first, we received our tax bill for this last year, we were shocked. Our taxes have gone up 40% in the last four years, 40%. That's a shocking increase for people that are trying to plan our future, take care of our home, and do what's responsible in our community. We'd like to stay in our home. But, you know, what we did, we decided to work with Senator Terry Gibson and Representative DeeDee Barrett to get more state aid for Hyde Park. I happen to know that Hyde Park has high needs. You, according to the measure of preschool lunch, are the third poorest district in the county. First is Poughkeepsie, second is Beacon, third is Hyde Park. That's a great percentage increase in the last few years. So we've talked with them about getting additional state aid, and they have done that. Their offices have assured me that they have been able to get increased state aid for Hyde Park. Dick and I are hoping that you will use some of the state aid to hold our taxes or to reduce our taxes. That would be a radical thought. But, you know, to have our taxes increased 40% in four years is way above the 2% number that the state is putting out as, you know, the rate that taxes should be increased for people to plan. So I think we need to think very carefully about how to use the tax money that you've been able to get. I would say that we paid our town and county taxes last weekend at our Clinton Town Hall. Our school taxes are more than three-and-a-half times what our town and county taxes are. They're shockingly high. So I know this is a burden for all of you to deal with, but we're asking you, as people of goodwill, to think carefully about this. I know you have a lot of important... I know you have a lot of important features going on with your athletic field and other things that you need to rein, to need to invest in, but think about the people out there struggling to make ends meet, to pay their school taxes. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Sue Tyson, I live in 51 Holt Road, Hyde Park, my kids went through the system here. And my daughter is one of those volunteer soldiers, which you're not so happy about. But she was a senior in high school when 20, 2001 happened, when nine, well, actually she went, she was just starting college. And after she finished college, which she rushed through in three years, she volunteered, because this is her state, and it happened in her state. Now, I talked to her before I came here tonight, and she's a captain. She says captains in higher probably don't need this money, but if you're private in the Army today, you're making less than $20,000. And it seems to me, a lot of these people coming home are not getting jobs. And it seems to me they do deserve the break. A lot of you who have never served, I get this entitlement from you that, well, these other people serve for us, which really ticks me off. I was so upset with you, Mr. Sheehan, when I heard you last week, or last time on the board meeting, when you talked, I was ready to go through my TV and come for you. I'm sorry, these veterans have given so much, you don't even know, I bet you don't know what a gold star is, do you?
I absolutely do.
What is it?
Gold star mother or father is somebody who lost their child.
Yes, and I'm a blue, so far, I'm a blue star mom, and I hope it stays that way.
Yeah, yeah, I do too.
But there's so much, you guys do not know what these guys go through, what hell they've been through. And they deserve something, because they helped keep you safe. You don't even know half the stuff that goes on, and I don't even know, because I'm not allowed to know what Rachel does anymore. But these guys deserve something.
Why does everything have to go to the money trail? That's all I've heard, is money. I wasn't allowed to graduate in 1944 by two weeks. I graduated from Roosevelt High School in 2001, 57 years later, and I'm proud of that. I was in the Battle of Bulge, one of Patton's heroes. I think this is an opportunity for you people to do something for the veterans. As far as I know, all of this money that we're talking about, tax rates and everything, I don't think any, the veterans ever cost you any of that. You're spending money for almost everything, and I think it's a shame that you can't see it clear, that you recognize these veterans. You have no idea, you walk outside tonight, it's near zero and it's three foot of snow. That's what I lived in for six weeks, and a hole in the ground. And a lot of these people can tell the same kind of a story. It's disgraceful, in my opinion, that you don't go ahead and give this break to these Most of these veterans, I'm 88. You're not gonna have to pay, give me anything for much longer. You have our Legion meetings, and there's nine people sitting around the table. Eight of them are over 80 years old. You're not have to, you're not gonna have to give us 15% or 20% much longer. This is not going to accelerate over the years and cost you more money. As we die off, you're not gonna have to pay us. And I think it's disgraceful, and I'll say that again, that the board can't see their way clear to recognize the veterans. You have no idea what combat is. I do. And I'll take it to my grave. It's hell, and I think it's disgraceful, in my opinion, that you even consider not giving these veterans a break, because they need it. Most of these guys are on Social Security, because we didn't know retirement like you do today. We don't have retirement, we have one check, Social Security, that's all. Fortunately, I have a service-connected disability, and I'll get a couple hundred bucks for that. But now I'm told, not talking about money, I'm talking about veterans. So, that's my feeling, and I'm strong about that. Have you ever been to Washington Cemetery? Have you been to Normandy Cemetery? I have. Have you been to the one in Schenectady? That's what it's all about. And the most it can cost the district is probably for each tax holder, maybe 10 or 12, $15. They'll pay the vet's phone bill. Thank you, and I respect you people for your job. But we have, we have to, we have to, this is a way of thanking them. This is a way of thanking them. Okay? Thank you very much.
I'm Kenneth Stark, I live in Hyde Park, and I'm a World War II veteran. Probably one of the few people that I've even heard of, but I actually took care of a veteran from earlier wars. When I first went into the Medical Corps, we had a veteran that had been a sergeant under Custer. Not too many people have met people like that. Anyway, I want to reinforce what Ralph says, that our group, as a group of World War II veterans are dying at the rate of 10,000 a day. They're not gonna be around too long, and most of them are on limited income. Social Security gives us a 1% raise a year, and taxes are a real burden for us. So my feeling is that some adjustment here, if you want to adjust it graded, whether you saw combat or not, is, you know, something you people have to consider, but I think the veterans overall deserve some consideration. I was drafted out of high school and lived on $30 a month for three years while I took care of the wounded Air Force men, I was an Air Force medic. So we lost a lot of our early life, and now we're on very limited income. And I think that, as Ralph says, some recognition is certainly would be appreciated. So thank you, gentlemen.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Can I say one more thing, Doug? Is that possible? No, it's okay, I was gonna say right here, I sent you some info, okay?
No, you got, Bill, you gotta go up and get on the camera, please.
Sorry. I mean, just to help you understand, I sent you some info, okay, for the Gilderlin School District, okay, they passed this veterans thing up in Albany. It's eight cents per thousand. It's on the email I sent you today. Eight cents it cost them.
It was nine cents, but...
Okay, nine cents, okay. Okay, Doug, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Haran, I live in Hyde Park, and I'm a taxpayer in the school district. And I know this isn't going to be a very popular opinion, considering who the groups are here this evening, but I'm against the veterans' preference. And the reason I'm against it is because you are shifting a tax burden away from one homeowner onto another. We've heard person after person, including the veterans, say their property taxes are unmanageable. I'm a member of the Roosevelt Fire District. I was told that my taxes would go up the equivalent of a cup of coffee for this new firehouse they're building. Well, unless I'm flying to Seattle to get that cup of coffee, that's what my taxes went up. It's absolutely ridiculous. These people are saying their taxes have gone up 40% in the last four years, and you think now is the time to shift the burden away from veterans and to young families? You heard Mr. Duffy say, "His son's house is underwater." How many more houses are underwater? How many more young couples and families are struggling to pay their taxes? It's absolutely ridiculous. And as much as I respect veterans and your service, I don't know that we want to be in the position of rewarding veterans versus firefighters, versus police officers, versus, you know, emergency service personnel and first responders. When you take the emotion out of the argument, how much of the tax burden are we going to shift? You brought up the point about enhanced star. We are already shifting the burden from one group of taxpayers to another group of taxpayers. And I don't feel it's right, and I especially do not feel it's right, in this economy. If we had a strong economy, if we had strong housing prices, if people's homes weren't underwater, if we weren't the third poorest school district in all of Duchess County, if we didn't have lines out of our food pantries on Friday up at the Reach Out Christian Center, where we're seeing more and more families coming? If this was a good economy, I'd be all for it. If we were talking about nine cents per thousand of value, that would be great. But when the Fire District is telling me that my taxes are going up by a cup of coffee, and I get my bill and my increase is 16%, that's no cup of coffee. And with all due respect, Mr. Kurlander, you can give me whatever number you want to tell me what the tax impact will be to me, but that's speculative. You can't tell me how many people are going to set up, sign up for this. And as admirable it is that Mr. Hader isn't gonna sign up for it, we don't know how many people are gonna sign up for it. We don't know who we're spreading the burden to. But we do know that families are already strapped. Taxes are due tom, no, Saturday, tomorrow or Saturday? Okay, they're due for the first. I wonder how many people are gonna pay 100% of their tax bill? Or how many people are going to have to cut it into three payments, because they don't have that money laying around to pay that bill? And that's all I would like to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? Barbara?
Okay, I had, my dad was in World War II, and both of my brothers were in the military. And that's not what I'm here to talk about. I just wanted to let you know, I don't know if you remember seeing this slide, this is the best I could do, I had to play it on TV, take the digital picture and print it, because I couldn't get a copy of the real thing.
Could you just explain what it is?
What?
What is it?
Okay, this is what the sign would look like at Havland before, and this is after, with the light insert in it, okay? The light insert, I don't remember talking about it as a facility person, and I don't remember having the light insert in it when it was talked even earlier. But it was discussed at the January 9th meeting, there was a presentation. And each one of them is going to be, you're gonna have lights, you're gonna have to bring electricity out here too, to all the schools. I think 10, 10 buildings, 10 schools, I think, 10 buildings. But what I'm concerned about is the fact that Havland and Hyde Park Elementary are historic buildings, as is Violet Avenue, but only two of them are on the list. Violet Avenue is up in Albany, the paperwork is there. We're hoping that you guys will think again as to having a lit sign that is possibly flashing and causing the neighbors opposite on the other side of Havland Road, causing them distraction, as Dan said at the last meeting, your neighbor. I hope you'll think again, because that building is a beautiful building. The lettering on there is gonna be so small that you're not gonna be able to see it when you're driving, unless you look at it for a long period of time and get to it and read all the words there, and in the meantime, you're gonna wreck a car. Your car, or maybe someone or others. So, you can put the same message on a board that's electronically updated in the building. Okay, most of the kids have these in their pockets, okay? You can also have Wi-Fi outside or inside the building, and they can read what was also in this, what these letterings here. So I would please hope that you think again before you put a sign like this with all this lighting and busyness on it versus this. So I hope you'd think again before you vote. And if it's an SED, if it has to be approved by SED, then I hope it does, let me say. Just concern.
No? No, ma'am, you only get one shot. You have to wait for the next one.
I'll talk to you.
Okay, yeah.
Hi, my name is Tom, Tom Malloy, Hyde Park. I wasn't organized to say anything tonight, but I just wanted to mention, there's a bomb threat yesterday. That's very upsetting, I think it's very exciting to me, but I know it's happened before. And I never wanted to see it become so commonplace that it's not taken seriously. Now, I know everything was taken seriously, but in light of, we just heard a report from the high school about security, no mention of yesterday's events at all, I thought that was kind of odd. Especially when this bomb threat may or may not have been in relation to the assembly that was taking place last night, I think that's very troublesome, and I would hope, which I'm sure is true, that the district takes it very seriously, that the persons responsible for such threats are prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. May I have a motion to exit?
We got one more.
Christine?
Since he opened the door again to the subject. Christine Jones, Hyde Park. The presentation that was given about security, it's really a question I have, was the issue of illegal substances considered in the incidences of disruption in the school? Because I know that heroin is such an outrageous problem in our community, in our schools, and it's frightening, since kids don't recover from it. You know, they usually end up not recovering. So, it's a big problem, and I didn't, maybe my attention got distracted, but I didn't hear that addressed, and I'm very interested, very, very concerned on all levels.
May I have a motion to get out of public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Well, we got a long list here. I got two pages worth, so.
Hit the easy ones first.
I will let everybody else speak first, though. Anybody want to comment?
Just comment on probably the easiest one. The incident yesterday has nothing to do with, in perspective, the security of this, we were reviewing what the security changes that have been made in reference to bombs and shootings and stuff like that. But as far as the seriousness of the situation, the student involved was identified through use of the security system up there. He has been brought to jail. He has been charged with a felony. He is currently out on bail and faces a long jail sentence. So the seriousness of what occurred at the school has been recognized, and the prosecution is in process for that. And it's not the, we report the incident and the information we have, the police investigate, and they follow up with the charges. So we're not, we can't mitigate those charges. So that's not something, you know, although by providing the evidence and stuff like that, that was, that whole incident was closed, not closed, but at least identified, and the individual involved was identified within hours of the incident.
Two hours.
And it was based quite heavily on information that was gathered with the new security systems.
But like, when we see him back in school, is what I'm...
No.
If you see him back in school, we won't be able to control that either, unfortunately. So there are situations we can't. And a lot of what we're talking about today, I'm sure is going to come out in the conversations that are going to occur right now, we as a board and we as a school district have no control over.
And, you know, I can take responsibility as the person who is acting superintendent this week in terms of the communication that went out and the decision to let people know what was going on as it was happening, to notify the whole community, not just the FDR community. And in terms of the school district, we can't comment on individual student discipline matters in public, which is why I can't say more about what the school can do on top of whatever's happening in the criminal system.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
I just have two clarifications that I think will help everybody. One thing that was mentioned by multiple folks with regards to the Veterans Tax Credit is the fact that STAR is already an exemption. The very distinct difference between STAR and the Veterans Tax Credit is STAR is funded by the state. We get a full reimbursement from the state for STAR, so it's not pushing anything. I just thought it was really an important clarification. The second thing that is really important to clarify with regards to the school district and the tax levy versus the school district and individual tax rates. We talk about this every single year. The school district has total control over what the tax levy increase or decrease is in any given year, but we have absolutely no control with regards to what individual tax rates are, you know, outside of making, you know, choices to give exemptions like this. I'm neither for or against it. I'll provide facts, but certainly want to make those clarifications that we set a tax levy and not the tax rates.
Could you expand that a little? Because I think the public should know that we have to make decisions before we actually know the results of things like equalization rates. When we do a budget, it's unfortunately as close to, but still a guess as we can. Is that not correct?
The tax levy is the increase from one year to the next. We know exactly what our tax levy is going to be in any given year.
Right.
So the one thing that we do present annually is the amount the tax levy is going to go up. The difference between last year's tax levy and the subsequent year's tax levy and what that difference is divided by the base would give you your increase in tax levy. Your increase in tax rate is an individual thing for which we have zero control over. We have zero control over assessed values, and we have zero control over equalization rate.
Okay.
So I hope that clarifies.
Yeah, I think the important part to know is that, you know, the tax levy year to year, we know, or what the total amount we collect and what the part we don't know until much later, usually in August, is how that, that total amount is being divided up amongst the five towns. That's the issue. And that's where we found ourselves this year with, with the equalization rate. You know, I think, you know, just to make a quick comment on, I guess, well, I know Doug's probably going through the list here, but just in general, one, you know, we recognize we have a problem that unfortunately we can't do anything about other than to do the same thing other folks are doing, citizens are doing privately, is to, you know, one, talk to the town of Hyde Park and say, you know, what are we going to do about, about this? But we can't make them, other than express our, you know, unlike the town of Hyde Park Board members, our constituents are in all five towns. You know, I happen to live in the town of Hyde Park. That doesn't mean I don't care about what happens in the other towns for, because if I'm here, then I have to care about whatever, everybody in the school district. So, you know, we'll certainly, you know, address that with them, and also obviously just like, again, other folks are doing, is communicating with state representatives to talk about, you know, you know, what can you do about increased state aid and really overall down the road, what are we doing about how we finance schools?
I think we did approach the town about this several years ago, didn't we, Wayne?
Every year since.
Every year.
After last year or last August, it's time to revisit the well on that.
I'm not saying we shouldn't.
No. So, because that was, I mean, startling.
It was. It was a big surprise to us, what happened to Clinton and Poughkeepsie.
Exactly, and Reindbeck.
Well, and I think one of the things, the towns' comment, I'm new to this game, but I mean, my understanding is that the cost of doing the reassessment or the revaluation is significant.
It is. Ten percent of their budget.
It's what?
Ten percent of their budget.
Ten, ten percent of their budget?
An eight million dollar budget, it would cost eight hundred thousand to do a reevaluation.
To do a reevaluation. So, you know, it's...
Well, I'll say it, I'd said at another board meeting, and I'll reiterate it here, the last time the town did a reevaluation, one of the things that was touted about it was that they were quantifying the information about the homes, the square footage, nature of the types of buildings and things like that. And the thing they said was, this should eliminate the need to reevaluate or do reassessments of the entire district over extended, you know, over short periods of time because they could just plug, you know, go four years hence and plug in the numbers for cost for the various types of housing and come up with a new evaluation. That's never happened. All right, two other things, and I'll probably be shutting up for the rest of the day. We're commenting on Hyde Park being a poor district. Obviously, the lunch program indicates the nature of the profile of the families in Hyde Park and the way they're going downhill. They are struggling, there's no question about it. They are struggling even with the short, small increases we're seeing in Hyde Park. What needs to also be mentioned is the biggest holder of property and value in Hyde Park is the federal government.
Mm-hmm.
Hyde Park has the highest ratio of untaxable land in the state.
Yep.
All of the mansions, all of the state properties are not taxable. On a year-to-year basis, there's a bill that comes through the, through the federal government that somehow gets, nobody knows how it gets, but Wayne's worked very diligently a couple of times now to identify to the, to our at least representatives, the significant amount of property. We're talking about the amount of monies to try and get an increase. But a bill comes through that says, all right, we understand Hyde Park, we're putting a burden on you because all of this property is not taxable, and we've seen as little as what, eight thousand dollars to cover, an eight thousand dollar bequeath, I guess is the best word you could use, from the federal government to cover the loss of taxable property because of them, to I think the most it's ever been, has been a hundred and five, a hundred and six thousand dollars, at least in the thirteen years I've been on the board. This doesn't come within an order of magnitude of the value of that property. So we are faced with educating our kids and not having that tax base available to us, and as everybody knows, there is no significant commercial tax base in Hyde Park. So everything is, the burden of everything here is on the shoulders of the people living in this community. And those shoulders have been pushed so hard now, I think we're talking about the houses being underwater. I think the taxpayers are underground in terms of the weight of the burden they've carried, in truth.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and not to go on too long about this, but, I mean, this whole thing with the Veterans Tax Credit, I got to tell you, I mean, I, if, if it wasn't for the fact that we're taking, we have to take money from one place and put it to the other, this is an easy decision. I mean, it's just, you know, it's a tough one. I mean, and take nothing away from veterans. I mean, like I say, I have brothers that served in the military, uncles that served in the military. Take absolutely nothing away, and you should, and you are proud, and you should be, and, you know, we appreciate everything you've done. You've made sacrifices, and many have made ultimate sacrifices, and take nothing away from that. It's, it's, it's an easy decision if it weren't for the money, and unfortunately, it does come down to the money because any money that we move, the potential is that we take it away from the kids. We take it away from what our mission is, and the need is...
You're ready to signs for the schools.
You know, unfortunately, unfortunately, the way the state works, it's just a different, everything is, you know, has tracks in which you can use it, and you just can't take money necessarily from this and put it to that. It's unfortunately much more complicated than it needs to be. I guess all I'd want to reiterate is, you know, I think that we heard from Mr. Athenas, I think it was? You know, I think we've got resources here. I think that we've got to be committed that we've got to, we've got to move this down the road. We've got to, we've got to get to a point where a decision can be made. I think we've got a lot of good people here that can, and who are committed to make it right and make the right decision for the community. And, you know, if, I think everybody's here ready to, you know, we're going to do it. It's a little quick, it's a little short, and it feels uncomfortable just because of that nature, but I think, you know, we're going to make it happen, we're going to make something happen. A decision has to be made. Hopefully, it can be one that's satisfying to our veterans, but, you know, we're going to make, make a decision happen.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd just like to ask Wayne to please get with the VFW guy because your, your numbers that I saw were based on like six hundred and fifty vets. If it's two thousand...
What are you saying is the total number of vets, not the number of registered vets?
But... What's the difference?
Whoever's getting the municipal...
Right, but they, that's a potential, that's a potential number of people who could...
Well, it's possible. Some of those aren't a property owner stuff, too.
Right. So, I mean, I just want to understand.
I got the numbers directly from the county. Whoever's registered right now for the municipal, right now.
Right.
That's the number they gave me.
Which doesn't include you, Doug.
It does not.
Right.
And also, let's remember that when you're talking about a veteran's exemption, you're only talking about a veteran who either served in a war, served in a combat zone, or is a disabled vet. It doesn't apply to a vet that, right? Not every vet. So Mike may have been giving the number of total veterans, so...
If you serve during a war.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm just looking at, says it served in a war, so that's right. Okay, I'm sorry, right, in combat zone.
I am thankful that I did not serve in combat.
But you were in during the time of war.
But I was in at the time of war, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so then maybe that two thousand number might be close to reality.
I bet it is.
I mean, we can qualify, I'm not sure what the word war is, but obviously, to me, if there's any endangerment at all to any of our troops in terms of getting killed while performing in their services, you know, that, to me, is a war. And if we go over the period of time from, let's go back to the start of the Second World War, we have very few veterans beyond that point, to current times, we've gone through how many circumstances? We've gone through the Korean War, we've gone through the Vietnam War, we've gone through Desert Storm, we're going through Iraq, we're going through Afghanistan. We've got to cover seventy-five percent of the time that's expired.
There's tons of them.
Yeah, no, you're probably right.
Grenada was a war.
I think there's few veterans that, that served during a time that there wasn't something going on, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, we're talking, you know, we're talking more than, if there's two thousand in Hyde Park, and legitimately, I think, we, if they were, we were talking at least fourteen hundred that are capable of claiming the exemption if they choose to. And, you know, the spread of numbers we've seen is so monumental that we have to go back and try and quantify these numbers.
Yes.
And we have to give the extremes, Wayne. We have to understand those extremes. Now, the other question I've got is...
The microphone is, yes, the mic's over.
All right, so I'll give you a call, and we could, you know, discuss your numbers, and it would be helpful.
I was just an offhand.
Yeah, but, you know, as I understand it now, the, those that are claiming the exemption at the county level would automatically be put on the rolls in Hyde Park if they live in Hyde Park for this exemption.
That's correct.
What I've not read is, is there any opportunity for them to disclaim the one at Hyde Park even though they continue to get the one at the county level? I mean, it seems to go all the way down the line, you know? And, you know, so somebody like Doug hasn't claimed it at the county level all the way down the line, and, you know, they wouldn't get into the act, but, you know, the variances that have been allowed by the state are so minimal, and the rules are so rigid, it scares me. And I've noticed the governor tends to do that every time he's spending somebody else's money. And if anybody wants to send this excerpt to the governor, feel free. But I've said it more before because this is the way it's been running. He's come down with a half a dozen mandates that he puts the burdens of covering the costs on the towns, not on his budget. He continues to take money from school districts for the last two years to cover his gap, which no longer exists. So we're still running with tax, you know, a third of the tax that we should have been receiving is still going to cover a gap that covers his budget that allows him to tell you, I've got a three billion dollar surplus coming up. A three billion dollar surplus is based on sixty percent of it being money he's taken from school districts that have a need for more than that.
Okay, I'd like to, there were two other topics that we haven't touched yet, the signs. Barbara's question about the signs. First of all, they're already approved. They've been blessed by the Visual Environment Committee, the town of Hyde Park, and our own administration, and it has been discussed quite a bit in the facility operation for...
Over the past five years.
For five years. So this isn't just something that we all just decided to do. It's been, it's been well thought out, and it doesn't flash, it's not facing the, the people across Havland Road, so I think, I'm not sure, I don't think we're in a position where we're going to change the design or stop the sign. So, I mean, it's already, it's approved, and it's out for bid and, and the rest of the stuff, so. That's all I'm going to say about that. I don't know the answer to Christine Jones' question, and I'm hoping that one of you gentlemen will be able to answer the question about whether the security reporting includes drug incidents.
I can.
You can?
Yeah, the Vader report includes any kind of in or out of school suspension related to drug possession or use on school grounds. So we do have to report about that.
You do it. That's part of the Vader?
Yes.
Okay. And I think we've covered the rest of, not maybe every individual person's comment, but I think we've handled everything. I just want to reiterate what Perry said, that we're not up here saying that we're not going to do this as far as the veteran's exemption is concerned. What we're saying is we need time to do it correctly.
Yeah, we can't do something like that without knowing what we're doing. That would be totally irresponsible.
So I'd like to move on at this point, if I can. I'd like to go to eight point one, review of the school year calendar. If anybody got any objections to the numbers or the dates involved. I would like to make one comment because I got a, scolding, I guess is a good word. I got a scolding at the library the other day about how come the school had off on Valentine's Day, and I tried to explain that it was nice to be able to have a four-day weekend and also that we have a number of school days that we're obligated to have, and we do each year have a hundred and eighty-one school days. And in this case, when we, last year when we did the calendar, it just turned out that we were able to have a four-day weekend. And it was connected to President's Day, right?
We have had that in...
Yes, well, I'm just... Yes, well, I'm just saying. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, anybody, I mean, we've been over the calendar a couple of times already. Does anybody see anything?
Yeah, I have a question on the, on the calendar. On September 11th, it's coded in as a status on the bottom. The legend tells us it's a date on which there are no after-school activities. The two, two others that I can identify in the calendar both refer to Jewish holidays where they're prohibited from actually participating in anything after sundown of a public nature. I see no identification for the 11th. I'm just wondering if that's a mistake that's been carried over and needs to be removed from the calendar.
No, I can speak to that.
Okay.
It was decided by the committee members who put the calendar together that in observance of 9-1-1, they would have no after-school activities that day.
That's fine, I think we need to add that to the identifications at the bottom so we know what it is.
Any other, any other comments on the calendar?
I would comment again that I think I've mentioned a couple of times over the years. There's a, the spring break calendar coincides with the Lenten week celebration of Christians and several things. But the point I'm making is that that is a holiday in which many families travel to participate in activities as a family on Sunday. And what we're doing is by having school on Monday, we're forcing them to either cut short their family gatherings, or travel extremely late at night, or keep their kids out of school on the day, the day following that, which is not, I think, one of the intentions we'd like to foster.
And, I'm sorry, which month was that, which, which week?
May, uh, spring break is, no, spring break, April, I'm sorry. It finishes up on April 3rd.
So Easter must be the 5th, then, Sunday the 5th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the school resumes on the 6th.
Well, one way you could do it is, you got the give-back formula. If only, if, let's see, if emergency days are not needed, if there's only one day left, you get it back as part of Memorial Day. If two days, an extra day on Memorial Day, and if it's, three days don't get used, you get Easter Monday off. You could always kind of, maybe we can flip that and say, no, Easter Monday's the first give-back day because it's not a winter like this year. You might have a chance of having one snow day left by that point, you know? Although, I don't know, April 6th, it can get kind of tou, eh, probably, you could probably get away with that. Hard to say.
All right, we'll, we'll-
Something to think about.
We'll have the committee look at that. Okay, any other comments? No? Move on to nominations for the Bocey's Board.
I don't have anybody, you know anybody?
Lots of luck on that one.
Yep, know you later, but not.
I'm assuming there's nobody else that has worlds of time that they wanna be associated, be associated with the Bocey's Board.
Another thankless job?
Right.
All right, so we, we will not, we will not forward any names for that. Okay, moving on then. And I have a motion for the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second, yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried, thank you. Can I have a motion for 9.2? Oh, that's part of the consent, I'm sorry, we gotta go down.
10.1?
10.1. It's been a long meeting, but it's not as long as I thought it would be, to tell you the truth. So I'm thankful for that. And I have a motion for 10.1, specialization placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick summary, we were presented with 125 approximately, meeting to approve. Just a quick summary, that the CPSC had four initial evaluations of students, and one transfer student coming in. These represent five new students for services. This went to the county, but would be moving up into the district. In the CSE level, there were seven initial eligibilities considered. Five of them were considered ineligible. We also had two that were, two students who were classified, and two that were declassified during the annual reviews. And as part of an expanded report that Aviva's now providing, or her department's now providing us, we had six students that exited during this period of time from the district, which are, balance out to some extent, the other students that came into the district, with transfer students from other districts, or defined, new defined students with needs.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I have a motion for 10.2? A budget transfer?
So moved.
Any discussion? Wayne, this is again, oh, he's not here. But anyway, it is a, a re-ship thing of the codes to our new accounting system.
Yep.
All those in favor? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.3, which is a project change order.
Second.
Is any discussion?
I'm not sure if the public, does the public, yeah, the public gets it, taking a look and see that, because it's a $9,000 coverage for additional parking spots in and around the handicapped area over by the tennis courts, which is the area I was referring to, to be used by the community at times when the school is in session, so there's no conflict. And I think there's, you know, those parking lot spaces will be well-used.
How many spaces you get for nine grand?
Uh, they said, I think it was about 12.
Jeez, seems like a lot of money for gravel. But I guess it is what it is.
A bit more if you want to pave it.
No, I guess.
All right, can I have a motion for-
Did we get a vote?
Oh, did we even vote? I'm sorry. Have a vote, all in favor? God, I thought I was gonna make it through a whole meeting without, neat. And I have a motion for 10.4, which is listed as this, a decrease in budget. That's to do with donations from the softball booster club. Any discussion?
Just to mention the fact that the booster club had donated money to have the district purchase some gravel and other things for them to put bleachers around their field. They did with their own labor and using the materials. They were able to do it at half the cost of the original money they donated. And they requested a refund of the remainder. The money that the district will retain is what it cost the district in providing supplies. We benefit from the bleachers in the area, and it's a wash as far as they paid for it, and they get money back, and that money is gonna come back to the district in some other form because they'll use it for other improvements.
And I have, did we vote on that one? No, we have, all those in favor? Okay. Can I have a motion for the amended contract for Adirondackebling? This is a group that's rewiring the district.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion for 10.6, HPE lease addendum for the town of Hyde Park? This is the one that was mislabeled at the last meeting with the wrong entity.
Organization name, yeah.
Organization name.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Same protocol?
Same thing with 10.7. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.8, printing of poll books, which we do every year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I wonder why Debbie can't do it in calligraphy for us.
Yeah, okay.
No.
All those in favor?
You can skip 10.9.
I wasn't afford-
10.9, yeah, we can, we can-
Ignore that one, no.
You can ignore that one, thank you.
I'll move 10.10, recall the teacher.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a recall of the teacher. It's on a list that they, when a position opens up, the next person on the list gets recalled.
This, this teacher was accessed in a budget cut earlier.
Cut earlier, right. All those in favor? Thank you. We're back to public participation. Can I have a motion for public participation?
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in public participation. Steve, you patiently waited when nobody else was here.
I'm gonna demand a chair for meetings like this. Steve Hughes, district resident. I think perhaps the question Mr. Heater asked about the Raptor system may have been misunderstood. The first time I went to the high school, they asked for my photo ID and they scanned it. And every time I've been back, they don't ask for the ID. They just print a badge up with my picture.
Ooh.
So they do store the pictures.
Well, if they scanned your license, they have a lot more than just a picture.
Yes, they do.
Wow.
And the other comment I just want to make, I certainly don't envy you the, the decision about the veterans' tax credit. I think one of the things that you ought to consider is, if you decide to go with the tax break, what the impact is going to be on the difference between the tax levy increase and people's tax rates increase. You've already got people upset when they don't match. This is only going to increase that difference.
Oh, no question.
And perhaps affect how they vote on the budget, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Anybody wanna?
Well, I think, you know, just to-
I think it was more of a, more of a statement than a question, yeah.
I may have heard you correctly, Steve, but said the tax levy, there is no difference in the tax levy. That's the issue. Yeah, and, okay, I think you make sure, and people-
Between the levy and people's tax rate.
Right, right.
Increase.
Right, right. Because the levy remains the same, it just gets spread across fewer people.
Fewer people, right.
That's the part that needs to be understood. People mad as they are or not about whether it should or should not be, the public needs to understand that.
Okay, 12.2, any board subcommittee reports? I think we had a policy subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, and worked with Elliot on some of the 7,300, 7,000, rather, policies. We also had a tech, a tech meeting with actually, right after the last meeting, so it was actually like three weeks ago, but where we discussed the, the current work being done on, in the district, the new wiring, the new wireless access points and that.
You know, Wayne, did all of that work finally, all of that work did get completed now?
We're, we're in the process of it. It's moving along very well. There, the infrastructure for the wireless is in place, as you can see up in the ceiling here in District Office. That's a, that's one of our, that's our new PA system. And the telephone structure is implemented, and we're working on the telephone schematics right now. So everything is either underway or moving towards, but the project's going very smoothly. Thank you to the Technology Department, specifically Forrest, for his utmost, you know, bringing things to my attention and, and to, you know, things that are important, and coordination and facilities and operations with their, you know, help alongside of making sure that, that things are getting put, you know, in places where they should, and, you know, the utmost good team effort and making sure a good product happens, so I'm very pleased.
Any other? Oh, yes, sorry, the Audit Committee, you wanna do that?
Well, the Audit Committee did meet, we met with the internal auditor and discussed his parameters for the upcoming year. The district has decided to continue with the internal audit, the one that reviews the internal controls the district has on how it's monitoring and utilizing and authorization expenditures, a thing we find to be very important. And we will be getting a report back from the internal auditor, which we will review, recommend for approval, and the board would vote on.
Okay, and Dan mentioned we will continue because it's no longer mandatory, but we will be continuing, we will continue to do internal audits. Any other subcommittees? Okay, moving on to upcoming meetings. There is a, on Thursday, March 6th, 2014, the District Leader, Leadership Team Meeting, DLT, at 6 o'clock at the Administration Office here in this room. On Friday, March 7th, 2014, there's a K-12 Early Release Superintendent's Conference Day. Man, taking away another one of my reading days. Thursday, the, March 13th is the next Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock here in this, in this building, in this room.
Now, don't we have a Facility Steering Committee meeting? It's usually the first, was it? They said the first Wednesday of the month?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not listed.
Not listed, but, okay, yeah, that's true, we do.
Going through the 14th, 13th, we must have had a Wednesday there somewhere.
Yep, okay. And there's no need for an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yay!
Thank you very much, gentlemen. This went a lot better than I thought it would, so thank you for your cooperation.